Okay, we'll kick things off. We've broken our session into two days. In the past, we tried to cram it all in and would run short on time. So Greg has a block of time this morning to cover a lot of procedural things that are very important, and I expect they will generate some questions. I'll defer to him in terms of fielding questions on the fly or how we want to go about that, depending on the question. We have, for those of you that have attended this before, we've added a couple of things that I find personally interesting, that dive into some of these topics a little bit further. So with that, I'll turn it over. Well, one other thing I should say is, we have a standing meeting with Sign of Destination Development and their attorneys on Tuesdays at 1:00. And so I'm going to step out, and Greg will be done by then, so he should be able to join as well. We'll let Debbie do the afternoon financial presentation. I've seen it, I've gone over it with her like four times preparing it, so I will catch back up just as quick as I can after the 1:00 meeting. With that, I'll turn it over to Greg.
Okay, thank you very much. Certainly ask questions when they occur to you. I want to make sure we address them as they come to mind. And as you might expect, I certainly hope and expect that this is somewhat of a tag team effort. You have good perspective from City Manager's Office staff on all of these points, so I welcome interjections at whatever time you want to use. This is perfectly helpful. The first topic has to do with the open meetings requirement. It's statutory. As you note, the meetings aren't to be open to the public accessibly, accessible to the public. And I think the framework for the discussion centers largely on that meeting definition. And I think if you can keep those elements in mind throughout our discussion, all the rest of this will converge on that framework. The first element is that for there to be a meeting, there would have to be a majority of the membership of the commission involved. When I say involved, that more often than not will be presence. But as we look to the second element, and that being interactive communication among members, that can be anywhere, anyhow, and under any circumstances via whatever means of communication that interaction might be able to occur. The third element, of course, is that the interactive communication has to do with the business of the city. When all those three elements are present, that fits that statutory definition of meeting. And you'll find that the City Manager's Office, and with my involvement, will always be trying to assist you to be sure that any time those three elements are present, that you have been provided with the appropriate structure, the appropriate notifications have been given so that you can conduct a lawful meeting. Something else to keep in mind that became apparent in some of my consultation over the years with the Attorney General's Office in terms of how they view these things. Another thing to keep in mind is, if someone is having a meeting, we can't make it a City Commission meeting. We have to be sure that one of the three elements isn't present for you all to participate or be present in someone else's meeting. Does that make, does that make sense?
So that could be a chamber of commerce, a reception, it could be a school function that we're invited to. K-Dub could invite you to one of their functions.
Right. The classic example, if you want to read about it, the, I can't remember, I'm sorry if it was Winfield or Wellington, but a governing body there, they knew that there was going to be a public forum sponsored by another entity on what was apparently a fairly hot topic in that community. They all went, had bid, suggested to them that they not actively participate. Well, it was apparently a hot enough topic that they chose to, you know, it's not like they were sitting together and talking during the public session. They participated in the forum to the extent that they were, in effect, a majority present, interactive communication regarding the business of the city. And frankly, got rung up about as seriously as anybody has been through the Attorney General's enforcement procedure. There again, there wasn't anything that could have been done to make that a legitimate meeting, but it ultimately had all three elements. So not that you all would be inclined to participate in that sort of setting and that sort of way, but you'll find that with the public notices that go out and the way that you're advised in those settings that are not your meetings, just to be watchful, and you'll find that the key is usually, if you're in those settings, is to very consciously avoid anything that would be interpreted as interactive communication. Whether that's back, you know, sitting together, or even a series of statements whereby you would be deemed to have expressed opinions as though you were having a conversation, even though it was open and everybody could hear, so.
So a couple of things there. We have really struggled with some of the nuances of that as meetings come up. And so one of the things we've started doing is, you know, an example, sign at the State House. We're riding on a bus, we're going to Topeka, we're there for city business, and don't know that we'd be making any city decisions, but city business could be discussed. And so the approach that we've employed more recently is to say, we're going to try to limit that to two elected officials, so we just don't have the majority, which then puts staff in a little bit of awkward position of, well, who gets to go or who wants to go? So what we've done is said, we're going to start with the presumption with the mayor and then the vice mayor, and then if those two don't want to attend, then we'll sort through the remaining commissioners until we have two. Another example is our orientation tour that we took. The way we accommodate that is say, we're going to make accommodations for the public. If they want to be on the bus with us, they can be. In fact, I think one year we had one or two people on the bus. The other thing that comes up is we have like the Chamber Annual Banquet where as mu, it doesn't, it's not practical to limit to two, and so we'll put out a notice that not our meeting, commissioners will be attending, they won't be discussing city business. That is probably the most precarious, that probably makes me the most uncomfortable, just if someone says, how do I know you didn't discuss city business, right? I don't believe that you didn't discuss city business. It's difficult to refute that. It's a lot easier to say we didn't have a majority, or we treated it as our meeting and it was a pub, open to the public. The other thing I would tell you is, I think this is one of many examples where you can talk to other cities, and if the city's larger than ours, city's maybe more sophisticated than ours, and I would be confident they'll tell you, oh yeah, we do this all the time. I don't know what you're talking about. We don't worry about all that. This is what we do. There's Attorney General cases, and Greg mentioned that Winfield was rung up with the Attorney General's Office. When we get the notice, we can share an example with you, or we were rung up with the Attorney General's Office. My philosophy, Greg and I have never really talked about this, but I'm confident Greg's philosophy is, we're not just going to take our chances and hope no one says anything. If we know what's right, we're going to try to do what's right.
Mike, how do we handle it like Friday nights, night with the Yotes, and say, I don't communicate with these guys about that, and all of a sudden, three of us show up at night with the Yotes? I mean, you know, we're, we're there. How is that viewed from an ethical standpoint?
My first encouragement would be, stay in different parts of the room, and don't, as much as your instinct might be to congregate, try not to do that, but.
Yeah, I think the safest is certainly your presence there, particularly if it's on an impromptu type scenario, everybody understands and expects you to participate in those sorts of things. The safest is if you just not interact.
It's easy for me to ignore these guys.
Yes. If you, if that's something that you all are collectively comfortable with and don't take offense at, that is the safest. To be able, if anybody ever suggests anything, to be able to say, hey, all three of us, or however many there were, say, no, we were there, but we did not interact. Now, if you do, then it becomes an evidentiary question. How, you know, how would everyone testify as to what was discussed? And if it's not city business, if you were, you know, just talking basketball, then you're still safe, but it becomes an evidentiary question at that point, and it gets harder at that point.
My suggestion, have your spouse with you. I mean, I don't know these two guys' spouses, I know yours and I know mine. I don't think anybody would want to tangle with them if they had any question about what we've talked about.
Yeah. Or maybe even whether you could have gotten the word in edgewise if you wanted to.
So a couple of things.
I know your wives and I meant that in a strictly friendly sort of way.
Next week, that it's a public event, public invitation has been out. I don't know that each commissioner is specifically invited, but it's North Salina Community is having this First Impressions presentation. I plan to go, and I think all the commissioners should go. It is.
So we try to stay on top of that by way of the City Manager's Office, and then Holly tries to communicate with you so that we know what the intentions are, so if we need to, we can put a notice out. But some of those organizations aren't very good, and I'm going to pause here. Maybe it's just me, or is the thermostat set at 80? I just keep getting hotter. So back to the topic, some organizations don't communicate with the City Manager's Office, or they'll blanket invite you, and then we'll see one in the City Manager's Office as well. If you, if any of you see those, we'd rather you over-communicate with Holly, even, you know, than assume that we've seen it, and then we'll try to coordinate. And, you know, the North Salina meeting might be a good example, where we put out a notice that not our meeting, but the commissioners have been invited. And actually, our wording is not only that they won't, they've been instructed or something along those lines to not discuss city business. So we'll at least try to put the notice out.
I guess the safest thing is, it should never be three of us together talking. I mean, two of us could actually say, hey, did you catch the game? If you see three of us together, we may be talking about the game. That then becomes a quorum.
Well, I think that sign ordinance meeting last week was a good example. We all kind of sat on different rows and.
Yep. But then you all, you know, the Winfield example, it was, if I recall it correctly, they weren't talking amongst themselves. It was a community topic, and one guy from one corner of the room says, well, I think we ought to do this, and another guy 10 minutes later says, I think we ought to do that. And we're going to get to serial meetings in a minute, but the, if three of you are at night of the Yotes, and only two of you are talking to each other, but then one of you goes and talks to the third, you can be accused of a serial meeting, which Greg's going to explain in a minute.
Unless there are any questions about what we have talked about, that's a good segue.
Is this in our packet here somewhere? What's your, on some slides?
Page 23 is where the.
Yeah, you're in the Governing Excellence Document.
Should be slide 114.
Yep, so it's in two places. The Governing Excellence Document is not the PowerPoint, it's the text, and then we're on slide 114 of the PowerPoint. And then it goes into slides after that.
Sorry, I missed the numbers on the slide. I got rid of the other presentation because it was, it was a lot, a lot of pages, and I was having trouble keeping track of where we were at.
Prior to 2008, two of you could not speak or could not interact. Now, two of you can't.
Staff love that. No, I'm kidding. It was easier to administer.
Before 2008, it was a much easier situation. You could not, no two of you could interact regarding city business outside of meet, of your, of your meeting. Now, that was a function of the definition. The definition, that first prong of the definition, which as you recall, is now a majority, which with a five-member body translates to three, which means that two of you can interact. The prior definition was a majority of a quorum. So you do the math, five-member body, that's the first time you get to the size of a body where a quorum is three and a majority of a quorum is two. So no two could interact. If two of you interacted, that was a meeting of the governing body under the pre-2008 definition. So what had happened was, not too long prior to 2008, the Attorney General issued an opinion that was possible for a body to have a meeting through a series of conversations with, among the members. There were two factions, as you might imagine, in terms of the legislature. You had those that wanted the opportunity for, you know, as many as, there's a lot of five or particularly county commissions, and I don't know statistically now, but have predominantly been three-member bodies, so no two of them could interact. The compromise was that those that wanted to, to be able to interact on a five-member body, and you had the other faction that was doing everything they could to make the serial meeting prohibition statutory, rather than just based on the Attorney General's opinion. So the compromise was the change in the definition, that you now have being a majority of the body. So the point of that was, that transitioned the prohibition against serial meetings into a statutory prohibition. The whole concept is that you not be able to circumvent the meeting requirement through a series of conversations that would lead toward essentially a predetermination of a matter outside the public meeting and the public discussion of the matter. Now, there does have to be a showing of intent. In other words, in the classic case, you would have a commissioner that had a particular agenda, wanted to get as best as possible a predetermination of where the other commissioners are on a particular issue, and, you know, with premeditation and intent, have that series of conversations to try to get to a point of knowing where the votes were and where the outcome would predictably be. That's the ultimate violation, if you will, where you start out with somebody who has that intent and carries that out through that series of conversations.
Technicality, if I were to speak to three other commissioners, but not let any of them know that I had spoke with the others or what the others had said, is that still considered a serial meeting? Because they don't know what I discussed with Commissioner B. or what Commissioner B. is, was thinking.
That, I would expect would, again, it's a, and I don't know when you wanted to go to the hypotheticals.
Oh yeah, we can.
It looks bad, I know.
Yeah, what you described gets you into deep evidentiary questions, just because of that series of conversations. Now, could you establish that, you know, that there wasn't, it's just a function of whether the intent of, it doesn't have to be everybody's intent, but the intent of the one that's advancing that series of conversations. But maybe the hypotheticals would be.
So while you're going to the hypotheticals, Greg mentioned there has to be a showing of intent, and feel free to correct me if I'm wrong, but there's, the burden quickly falls on us. You can file with the Attorney General's Office, you can file a complaint. Greg and his firm do a terrific job of responding to those, and we've had a handful that we've had to respond to over a short period of time. Every one of those responses is at least that thick, and it is incredibly detailed. It's an incredible amount of time on Greg's part and staff's part. We've been, you know, we've had favorable outcomes with the Attorney General's Office, but you present, you start with the presumption that you're accused, and might as well say guilty until proven innocent, and the burden's on us to prove ourselves innocent. So here's our hypotheticals. I'll go ahead and read them. Patty Public feels very strongly that the city needs to reinstate its ban on fireworks within the city limits. She's spoken in citizens' forum at multiple meetings, to the point that the City Commission instructed staff to draft an ordinance banning fireworks on the next meeting's agenda. She contacts you as a commissioner to express her support for a fireworks ban and encourage you to vote for a fireworks ban at the next meeting.
Absolutely nothing wrong with that. In fact, that's the citizen's right to petition you on a legislative matter. We'll get into some of the significance of a quasi judicial matter later, but that's the type of thing that I expect happens often in this pod.
Scenario 1A, variation of scenario one. John Hughes, citizen, feels very strongly that the city needs to reinstate its ban on fireworks within the city limits, and he knows an ordinance is scheduled for City Commission consideration in an upcoming meeting. He contacts you as a commissioner to express his support. He shares with you that he will be contacting all of the commissioners, hoping to convince them to support the ban.
Again, no harm there. There's been no interactive communication among members of the governing body.
And if he were to say.
I think you should have changed your scenario to BSL.
Well, I was thinking chickens when I wrote it, but.
This is a close enough to real life there. If he said Commissioner B. told me.
Well, we got three more scenarios. Scenario 1B. Uncle Sam feels very strongly that fireworks are a patriotic way for people to celebrate their freedom, and the city should not ban fireworks within the city limits. He knows an ordinance is scheduled for City Commission consideration at an upcoming meeting. He contacts you as a commissioner to express his opposition to the ban. He shares with you that he will be contacting all the commissioners, hoping to convince at least three commissioners to not support the ban, and asks you how you will be voting.
This is the first point where I'm here to hopefully give helpful legal advice and not necessarily political advice. But I do think as soon as you start, I don't think, I think it's fine to articulate where you are in your thought on the matter, in a, you know, in a conversational sort of sense. I think if you do start getting into the weeds here a little bit, I think any indication of how you intend to vote, I would offer a cautionary suggestion, that that starts getting you into potentially where it becomes a matter of, you know, from an evidentiary standpoint of just what you said and how, you know, if the, if it didn't matter what was said at the meeting, you know, you're starting to get into a little bit of a trouble.
So last week.
But it's not prohibited, that, you know, that, you telling that person how you're going to vote, if, I'm not suggesting that that is unlawful, I'm just suggesting you start getting into the grayer area there. And if asked, I would suggest that, you know, your ultimate position for here, before hearing what all is discussed in your meeting, starts getting into the potentially problematic area.
Last week, we all received an email concerning BSL. Mike and I discussed that email. Should Jerry want to talk to me about it? Is that a?
Well, I think it's fine for that conversation to occur as long as it just sticks to the policy merits, one or the other, but I think if you start telling each other how you're going to vote, and I, the ultimate question would be, Mayor, was your intent to develop a majority position and to know that you had a majority, whatever your position might be, that you were, were you in the process of developing that majority position outside your public meeting?
And so it's a subtlety, but develop versus assess. And I'm not trying to develop it, I'm just trying to figure out where everybody stands to see where we're headed.
But if he tells Jerry what Commissioner Hoppick and him discussed, is that then a serial meeting? Because now you have three people aware of the same information.
I'm sorry, take me through that again.
Okay. Mayor says he spoke with Hoppick about the topic, so that's perfectly entitled to do that. If he then calls Jerry and says, hey, I talked with Mike, and this is how he thinks, this is how he feels about this, and we discussed that and shares that with Jerry, is that then a serial meeting? Because.
Somehow Jerry became the focus.
Right. Nice being the swing though.
I don't think I could say conclusively that's a slam dunk, that's a serial meeting. But it, and I'm sorry, but it does get down to, and that's what makes for the thick notebooks, is in response, if somebody gets word of those conversations and pushes the button online and says, I think the City Commissioners engaged in a serial meeting, we're off to the races trying to establish, hopefully establish, that it wasn't the intent to develop and assess the ultimate position before your meeting. I think it's to be avoided. I don't think the scenario you've described is just per se a categorical violation, but it's starting to have the seeds of having to prove that.
And it's not a stretch to say that someone observing the meeting will contact me or Greg and say, a commissioner made a statement that causes me to question whether there was a serial meeting. I'm not going to say that happened frequently, but it happened. That question gets raised.
Simple terms, Mike and I discussed this email, and Jerry says, did you get that crazy email? There's nothing wrong with that, is there?
No, no.
If it's, I think they have a point. I think we should put that on an upcoming agenda, or we ought to, I think we ought to change our policy like they suggested. Or conversely, I think they're nuts and we need to stand our ground. And you get into that policy discussion, and then you're on a slippery slope.
I'm sorry, it's not so very black and white, but it's not. Now, a recent, maybe this is illustrative, I don't want to jump out of the sequence of the hypotheticals either, so maybe we should.
Okay, well, they're working, so go ahead.
Okay. The, there's a fairly recent Attorney General's opinion, because this can happen in the context of email exchanges, if you might. That's, that gets easier from an evidentiary standpoint, because here it is, you don't have to recall what anybody. That's, that, that gets easier from an evidentiary standpoint, because here it is, you don't have to recall what anybody said, but in that case, there was a communication to all commissioners by email. The one commissioner responded and did what, as you know, we generally advise not to do, that was the reply all. So, the commissioner responded to the individual, but with copies to all the other commissioners. That was determined, the fact that they did that was determined not to be a serial meeting. That particular commissioner responding to the individual. Because you had the missing element of the interaction, interact, there was no interactive communication between commissioners. You only had them having seen the response and the position taken by the responding commissioner. Now, as you would anticipate, if some, if one of those other elected officials then responded to that email, it would have been a different story, and I'm predicting a different outcome. The opinion doesn't go that far, but it came down to the point that because there was not direct interactive communication there. Now, and then again, the hypotheticals can, can go on all day. I would have to say that if there had been an indication that there was intent, I think you could potentially arrange a surrogate, and you wouldn't want to get into that territory, and I'm not suggesting anyone would, but I think it would have been a different story had an elected official initiated that contact with that citizen, and there was some indication that there was intent of that commissioner to try to get to a majority position through that third party, it would have been a different outcome as well.
And, and unfavorable different outcomes.
Yes, yes.
So, you may notice on my emails that I send to you a, as a group, there's, I, I have to insert it, so every now and then I may forget it, but there is a script there of, don't reply all, and then you, I don't know if anybody noticed, but one I do need to text you, I text the mayor first, and then I forward the mayor's email to everyone else individually, so that there's no opportunity for an inadvertent reply all in that scenario. Okay, the next hypothetical. Crazy Ed is a fireworks spender that's had a successful fireworks stand in Salina for years. He's contacted you to request that you vote no on an upcoming fireworks ban, indicating that he intends to contact commissioners to coordinate three votes against the ban, and asks you how you will be voting. So he's volunteered to be the intermediary.
Did anyone see the bill in the Kansas House of having year-round fireworks?
Yep. So the answer to that, Greg?
I think you're across the line there, as far as certainly having.
Okay.
But I think, again, it's back to that, I don't know which is, the legal advice, I think, would be to avoid articulating your position as to how you would vote in that situation. There's a political aspect of that that I can't speak to, but.
But isn't that what lobbyists do, is go around and collect votes?
Oh, sure.
They, yeah.
In, in the context, and.
Say, Ed, Crazy Ed hires a lobbyist. Same thing.
The, well.
A lot of times, these rules don't apply to the legislature.
Yeah, you'll, that's, that's.
None of them applies to the legislature.
Well, I don't know about this in particular, but they pass a lot that apply to us and don't uniformly apply to themselves.
You'd also have to get a whole lot more votes, because you're dealing with, you know, two hundred people.
But they are, they do count votes in that regard.
Yeah, certainly.
Yeah, they, uh, yeah, I think you just have to live with the concept that the difference between a five-member board and how these rules play out as contrasted with, you know, the legislature and.
Same thing with.
It, it applies ultimately to committees, and I can't claim to be a rugged student of how many folks are generally on those legislative committees, but it's a different arena, no question. Uh, and as you know, there are, there are, in a legisla- in a larger legislative body, there are positions, that, that's what they're supposed to do, and they do, but it is the difference between how these rules apply at the level of.
And scenario one D is the one that you raised, Commissioner Davis. Coach Craddock has a youth sports team who sells fireworks in Salina as their sole team fundraiser for the year. She has contacted you to request that you vote no on an upcoming fireworks ban, indicating that she intends to contact each commissioner to confirm that three votes, three will be voting against the ban. She informs you that Commissioner A and Commissioner B have both told her that they will be voting no, and asks for your no vote in order to ensure that there are enough votes to defeat, defeat the fireworks ban.
Coach, have a nice afternoon. See you at the meeting. Thanks for calling.
So, I would say that it's not unique to Salina, but there are times when an elected official will strategically say, I can only talk to one person about this, so I'm gonna, I'm, I'm gonna choose who I talk to accordingly. That is permissible. But if you happen to be the focus of multiple commissioners coming to the same conclusion that they need to talk to you, then you need to avoid being the hub of that, that, the spokes of that wheel.
The other aspect of this, and I think this comes to play here, is as much as we focus our effort on making sure as best we can that, that you don't find yourselves in a open meetings violation circumstance, it is the governing body that is deemed to have violated the act. So, we can't violate it. Only you can violate it. And I say that in this context, because even though you might, you know, innocently enough, tell somebody what your position is, what your vote might be, I think, and I know you all are mutually respectful of each other, but that's why I get so concerned about early indications prior to the meeting, indications of, yeah, this is how I'm going to vote before you hear the conversation, is just fraught with peril.
So what if this coach comes and asks, you know, do you know where Jerry is on fireworks? What do you, where do you think he? Is that total violation if I say, ah, I think he's on the fence?
Um, no, I don't think that's what this is intended to avoid. I think that's.
So, three things. Um, one, what we've seen out of the Attorney's General, General's office is kind of progressive discipline from chastising to training to fining, um, individual elected officials. Secondly, um, don't hesitate, if you have any questions whatsoever, to reach out to anyone in the city manager's office and Greg directly. And I will try to help you the best I can, but there are gonna be plenty of times where I have to pause and say, um, let me get with Greg and we'll get back with you. And then lastly, there are well-meaning individuals in the community that have no reason to have any understanding of any of this. And I get into lively conversations with some of them about, you mean to tell me I can't talk to my elected, I can't? And we've had it before, where they individually want to take each one of you to lunch and, and buttonhole you on, where you stand on, on something that they're trying to make happen. And I'll acknowledge, that doesn't seem democratic, that doesn't seem like they have access to their elected officials. But the point is, they have access in a certain forum where everybody else has the opportunity to know about those conversations as well, which is why this all ends up under the Kansas Open Meetings Act.
It's a major segue, but a little technicality, if that should happen, we should pay for our own lunch, correct?
Do we get into?
Well, because, you know.
No, that's a good question.
Yeah, I mean, because it came up one, several years ago, and I was uncomfortable, I said, you know, I appreciate you inviting me to lunch, but, you know, I don't know who's sitting here, and if they weren't sitting here, I have a feeling we should have separate tickets here, and.
Uh, it'll come down to de minimis.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's.
I mean, if it's a candy bar, I take it, but if it's, if it's a twenty-dollar lunch, it's like, uh-huh, okay, no.
That, that's certainly the safer approach. I don't know that you would. It, you know, if it's a, like, de minimis is, is basically the, the test. If it's.
So don't get on his plane, go to Vegas to discuss it.
Yeah, yeah. If they have a yacht, I think we're good on the yacht. But, uh, and de minimis, as you know, is a little difficult to define, but if it's anything that you think is intended to tip the scale, that'd be, I think, your, your test.
So it's not the monetary.
Well, it becomes a factor, but, you know, if somebody invites you to lunch and they're, they pick it up, I, I don't think anybody's going to suggest that, you know, unless it's in an extravagant environment. Now.
No, I, no, I'm chuckling over here because of all the different scenarios, and I'm gonna throw one at you that's hardly even fair, because I haven't hit you ahead of time, but.
Oh, okay.
We just bought eight million dollars' worth of Pierce fire trucks. They show up to deliver a fire truck and they hand out polos with their logo on it. We've already made the decision.
Say, say that again?
We just bought eight million dollars' worth of Pierce fire trucks, and they show up to deliver the fleet or the first truck. We've already made the decision, we've entered into the contracts, and they have polos to hand out with their logos on it to elected officials and city staff.
And they've got their.
Yep.
I'd say you'd want to stay away from that.
Okay.
Because of the, I mean, you, you become the minion for their advertising.
What about a hat?
Well, that's a good point. I.
These are all touchy, sensitive topics.
I, I can't claim to be the last word in any of this, but.
I would think the general public wouldn't necessarily know when you received that shirt either.
Right.
There might be.
Yeah, that's true.
Yeah, I, I think an argument can be made, the decision's already been made, and you're not being influenced, but perception-wise, yep.
But now, if they brought us jackets that said Salina Fire Department, and their logo wasn't on it, would, would the answer be any different?
I think it still turns down, it turns into the value of what they're giving you. I mean, be much like giving you tickets to a Chiefs game. Doesn't have any, have their logo on it anywhere, but it has value.
So what about, uh, the backseeds? I was there at the groundbreaking. Everybody got a hat.
Yep. Greg, Greg and I may differ, but I think part of it is, is it influencing your decision? When you're at a groundbreaking and it's already done, um, and, and then it comes down to de minimis. And not to sidetrack us too much, but the state of Missouri, by constitutional amendment, legislated what was de minimis to the point that it's arguable that giving a business card has value, therefore you can't do it. They lobbying totally changed in the state of Missouri over there, changed.
But if they're giving out a thousand hats to a thousand people who can't, they're not getting anything just because they're a commissioner.
That's, that's a fact, yeah. Yeah, the, well, and those that are, the public administrators in the room, uh, there is a lot more attention, I think, in, in evaluation of that sort of thing in, in your realm, isn't there, with ICMA and?
Yeah.
I mean, that's, that's always a topic that these guys have.
ICMA, frankly, ICMA doesn't do a very good job of it.
They're a little unclear.
Clarity.
My point is, their, their professional associations deal with that more extensively than anything that I have exposure to.
Their, their guidance is generally the value of it and is it intended to influence your decision. So, you can go to conferences and they'll have raffle prizes or things after the fact. They don't necessarily.
So with the fire trucks, they deliver them, money's already been spent, decision's made. What's, what's wrong with that?
I, I think you could make the argument that this is months after the decision, and it didn't influence my decision. The optics of it could be, yeah, who knows, they promised you, promised it to you before you voted, but I.
Yeah, I mean, or it could be, you just bought seven trucks, but you have twenty trucks in your fleet, so is, is this gonna influence your decision down the line when you're purchasing additional trucks? I mean.
I think, I, I think it's probably defensible, but you'd have to, you might have to defend it.
So if they give everything, all this stuff to the brass, the chiefs, that's okay?
Same problem. Nope.
Nope.
Same problem. And we try to cover it in our, in our policies, but, you know, they'll, you'll, they'll end up going through kind of that same thought process.
Yeah, I mean, it's not uncommon for us to get things like, like somebody will send a hat, or a, a cup, a mug, a pin, something like that.
Around Christmas time.
Yeah, around Christmas time, we get those kinds of things, but generally speaking, it comes to the entire group.
Yep.
It's not individualized. If somebody were to get you a, you know, a two-hundred-dollar watch and it went directly to me, and I was the one working with them, that would be a problem. I mean, so we'd have to look at those sorts of things.
Yep.
Yeah, I think the way we handle, I mean, personal example. The department heads or the executive staff wanted to have kind of a breakfast to, a Christmas-type holiday, and chose a breakfast format. Well, rather than sending popcorn or cookies, I asked Mike if it'd be all right for Clark, Mize, and Lynn to pick up the tab for that, you know, it was available to everybody on the executive staff. It was, you know, the price of breakfast at.
Perkins.
Perkins. But I knew I needed to clear it with Mike, and I did, and that happened, but.
And my rationale was, we're not actively soliciting legal services and trying to select a legal services provider, and so we did it.
But, uh, again, back to the public administrators, you can be sure that it's carefully, as carefully as possible addressed at the adminis- at the city manager's level in terms of what happens in that regard among, at the staff level.
So I'll close with, don't hesitate to ask, and, you know, and it may feel like the same question in a different form. It may be, I'm sure we talked about this, but I can't remember what we concluded, don't hesitate to ask. We'd rather help you on the front end, and, and not to say that we won't be responding on the back end too, but we'd rather help you on the front end.
Any more on the hopefully academic discussion of, of serial meetings?
No, I was just gonna say, my approach usually is, if, if a topic comes up or I need to talk to somebody, you know, I consider myself having, you know, one coin to spend. And I can either spend it on the person who I think may be aligned with the way I am, or I can spend it on the person who I think is at the opposite end, trying to convince them. But it's, you know, which way do I want to spend that, spend that quarter, you know, it's, it's. With, with that, because you, you, you can't spend the second one.
The, the notice aspect, I, maybe you all are familiar with what happens in the background on your, on your regu- on your meetings, whether your regular meetings or special meetings. Uh, the statutory requirement is that notice be given to anyone who has requested that notice. So there's a list, um, that is monitored, and, um, the posting of agendas and so forth is handled through the clerk's office. The news releases are handled through the city manager's office. So you have both of those. So, you have both of those avenues. The statutory required one is the list in the clerk's office monitor, so that's the significance of those notices going out.
So, we're not necessarily required to send out a press release when there's a meeting. The actual notice that's required by open meetings is the notice that goes out to that list, so we do that just as an abundance of caution and make sure that people actually do know what's going on, but it's not something that's actually required.
We had a hiccup a few orientations ago, th- this meeting, where we maintained a list, but it, it, I can't even recall the specifics of how it didn't get to an individual, and they then filed a complaint with the attorney general's office. We did a couple of things, the, we've added to the agendas where the chairperson asked staff to confirm that notice has been provided, and did that for a couple of reasons, one, truly to be the reminder of, to staff that if, for some reason, it didn't, now's the time to speak up, and then secondly, I don't know how effective it might be, but it gives the chairperson and the board a little bit of cover that they're relying on staff. To Greg's prior point, you're still held accountable, but it's one more layer of response. The other thing that sticks with me just a little bit is the attorney general's office training that we sponsored here in Salina. Their interpretation was, if someone requests that notice, that's all they have to do, and you don't, you can't send them to a website, you can't refer them to somebody else. A hypothetical that I gave is based on the way they presented it, you could grab the trash guy picking up your trash can and say, hey, I want notice of park board meetings, and theoretically, now the burden's on us. So, from a staff perspective, we try to be mindful that we're not just referring them to our website. That is ultimately where they get signed up, but if they want notice, we ought to take their name and their contact information and try to facilitate that within reason. I don't know if you as elected officials get contacted, but probably the same approach, let me take your information and I'll, I'll pass it on.
So, do we have a notification list that all of our meetings, this blanket goes out to?
Every meeting in one fell swoop, you mean?
No, like your parks, your planning, your.
Yeah, so we, we have on the website, you can self-subscribe and you can self unsubscribe to those distribution lists, and then it's broken out topically so that you can choose which ones you want.
Yeah, so each board has its own individual list.
Okay.
Back in the old days, before email, did that go out by mail?
And it's not the whole packet, in that instance, it's just notice of the meeting, but theoretically, yes.
So, just having like a media, the paper posts this, that, that.
No, that doesn't satisfy the requirement.
Yep, and there's actually no requirement to put it in the media, I mean, to put it in the paper.
And there's not a advance notice, there's, you know, so many hours in advance either, but we, we try to observe both this notice requirement and issue the press release simultaneously.
Any questions about that? Executive sessions, the statute does recognize that there are certain circumstances that it's in the public interest that you all have the opportunity to discuss matters privately, or in private, or in an executive session. There, the statute sets out the justifications, what circumstances that is permitted. The ones, of course, that are most applicable to the city's functions are going to be the personnel matters discussion and the attorney-client privilege conversations, and there is provision for preliminary discussions relating to the acquisition of real estate, not the sale, but just the acquisition of real estate. Those are the ones that we have reason to utilize time to time. It is certainly something that Salina, I think, has a history of utilizing those as sparingly as possible. And we do one thing that I don't know that anybody else in the state does it, but I think it's been helpful, and that is, the entire motion, as you, I'm sure, observe, is set forth on, in your agenda. The three elements of that motion are to include, they have to include the justification, which is the statutory basis for the executive session. But yet, not only that, but the subject, to the extent that the subject can be described without eliminating the point of the executive session, and then the details of when and where you're going to reconvene. So, that's why those motions are pretty long, by the time particularly you try to identify the subject as completely as possible without eliminating the point of the, of the executive session. The the description of that subject, again, we'll, we'll try to, you have to speculate a little bit, but the problem was, you've seen and had to read those motions, if you're sitting in the audience, you're gonna have to be really on top of it to pick up the significance, particularly of the description of the justification and the subject. And frankly, we ran into, sometimes complaints were because they didn't think we had adequately described the subject, but, you know, you pull out the motion and say, here, here's what we said, well, people weren't always picking up on that when they just heard it written. So, that's what generated the recommendation that I thought it would be helpful if anybody could, you know, they see, as soon as you all see, when that is posted, what that description is and what the subject and the justification is, so that if they have questions in advance, whatever, we would avoid those complaints of not knowing and understanding what the basis was for the executive session.
And once again, we may be the only one in the state of Kansas that's doing it, but it's rooted in attorney general guidance.
Yeah.
Because we've had people say, do we have to go to this length of, you know, detail and this long of a motion? It's all to satisfy those, those expectations of.
And we know that the first, if there's any complaint about, and particularly an executive session question of a potential violation, the first place the attorney general, the first question they'll ask is, what did the motion say? And is it fully reflected in the minutes? Well, we know it's gonna be fully reflected, and it's not only there, it's in the agenda, so.
Does the public have any ability to question the validity of the reason for going into executive session? Or that be a retrospect, that would be a retrospective review, not.
Oh, to challenge it on.
Challenge at the moment?
Uh, make sure I understand your question, you mean, like, when the motion's made?
Let's say the justification sounds really flimsy. Could anyone from the public challenge that? Or is it just a mistake?
Prevent going in.
Is it just, or, or call us on our, you know, and say, you gotta clean this up.
You know, in the past, we have had city commissioners that have questioned the justification for going into executive session, and we had an executive session to talk about the justification for going into executive session. I don't know if we've had that happen from the public's side.
Well, we really don't have a format for public comment on an executive session motion.
But to.
I mean.
Yeah, we haven't specifically called for public.
I hope you trust that Greg's not gonna let us go into executive session if it's not a viable reason to go into executive session. I mean, that's why we have legal counsel to tell us.
I was gonna wait to make this point, but there's no presumption that you have to go into executive session. There's a presumption that everything is open, and you have a limited, I say limited, that it's like forty-seven reasons long of reasons for executive session, but it doesn't mean you have to. So, part of that decision and making that motion to go into executive session is you, you know, deciding that that's what you wanna do.
Yeah, and to Jacob's point, particularly on attorney-client privilege matters. You all hold the privilege, if that makes sense, the, whether something is to be, if there's legal advice involved, it qualifies for the attorney-client privilege exception. But you all hold the privilege. I don't. And we have had a case, not, not so much recently, where I will have to say, the answer to your question, this is out in the public, the answer to your question involves giving legal advice on this matter. I can't waive the privilege, or I shouldn't. It's not for me to make that decision, but I need to have an executive session with you to determine whether you wish to, for me to advise you publicly or privately. And that's a separate topic. Similar to the point Jacob was making, it, it's your privilege in the context of an attorney-client privileged communication.
So, in answer to your question, with it being on the agenda and the agenda distributed in advance, I think there is an opportunity for the public to know the intention, which creates an opportunity for them to approach any of us and say, I question the validity, the need or the validity, those may be two different things for the executive session, but we don't have a public comment section about the executive session motion to raise it at that point. And we are starting with the presumption that we're not gonna knowingly or intentionally lead you into an illegal executive session.
So, someone could actually make a comment about that during the citizens forum section, if they wish to use the three minutes for that.
Yeah, that would, that.
That's true, because it is on the agenda ahead of time.
It's definitely something that's on the agenda, but since, yeah, I assume we.
Now, I've heard the wording on that given both ways, is the citizens forum for items not on the agenda? Because sometimes, I think I probably said, you know, any, basically inferred anything you want to talk to, we prefer not to do it on the agenda because they already have opportunity for citizens' comment for that, but is it, is our intent, and I think the intent is for something not on the agenda, but do we exclude agenda items?
We generally.
I don't think we have, really.
I don't know that we've had anybody.
We're actually gonna talk about that coming up, there's a whole slide where we're gonna go over that. The rules, procedures in that is listed, and we can read through it, and.
Right, because particular, okay.
I mean, I think it does say that you're not supposed to talk about items that are on the agenda, but I, we've never really limited anything, I mean, I can't recall a thing where we said, oh, that's on the agenda, you can't talk about it, or.
Well, particularly since it comes at the end of the meeting.
They've already had the opportunity to talk about it.
In the agenda, it's already been settled, you know, so all we're gonna get at that point is a comment about what we've already done. And it wouldn't be influencing action.
Yeah, I think, and we'll get into the public comment portion, but, you know, that's not a two-way conversation, so if you want to entertain the comment, you could take it and then take it under advisement without having to. Yeah, to get into a back and forth.
Are there any questions about the logistics, or I don't wanna go on too long if it's, if there aren't any particular questions about that, I'd say the procedural or logistical aspects of a, of your executive session.
And we cannot reference even the fact that we, we couldn't say, oh, we talked about it, but I can't tell you what you talked, we talked about, because that then exposes that information, is that? The reason for going in is made in the motion, but any reference to anything that we heard or document we saw has to be kept under wraps, or it's then.
That's, that's correct, that's the next aspect that I was.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Well, no, that's fine, that's fine, it's a good segue. The, I mean, the point of that conversation is that it is to be a confidential conversation among you all, and that, of course, is addressed in the ethical policy, the ethics policy, and the whole idea is that that is to be maintained as a confidential conversation. Now, there's a point at which future facts make much of, can make the conversation academic, but safest course, particularly as to the, and Mike may wish to speak to this, as you all would know, that, that is a key element as far as your mutual trust as a governing body, is confidence that in each other, that the confidentiality of those conversations will be maintained. I've had, it's been a number of years, years, early, some of my earliest experiences were trying to assist a body that was not the governing body, but a public body that it was known that on a personnel matter, that communications were going directly from one of those bodies, members of the body, to that employee, and that was a difficult situation to manage, and you can imagine what it did to the trust level among the members of that body.
Yeah, so, on a somewhat related note, there's, there's times where, you know, there's executive session conversation, and there's work to be done, additional staffing to be done to come back to you, and we have to be very mindful as we do that that it doesn't come off as if some decision has been predetermined. And that's, once again, partially perception, partially how things are phrased, or what actions are taken, but we're very mindful of keeping all that tentative, and then ultimate action comes back to you, and that kind of gets to the topic of motions in the executive session and how we follow up. But I, I can't really add more to Greg's point, I think it's self-evident that if, if you don't have a level of trust, trust that what's in executive session is going to stay in executive session, it, it causes that conversation to be stilted, and it causes executive sessions to not be effective.
Yeah, but the key test in terms of where there would be potentially a problem is the requirement that any binding action by the governing body must be taken in the public meetings. Now, the question then becomes, as you address matters in the executive session, obviously, you can't take binding actions in that context. Now, there are times when it's necessary to give direction to staff, but that won't be a binding action, binding on the city. And there are times where we do have to try to garner a sense of direction from that executive session conversation so the matter can be advanced, but the thing that we'll be always watchful for is to never have a scenario where anybody could suggest that you were somehow taking binding action in that setting.
So, no matter what we decided as a group, either if we decided as a group or evident from everyone's comments that we were all thinking the same way, nothing official's gonna happen till we go out in public, make a motion, second, and vote.
Correct, correct.
It's an open records item, but you might as well touch on referencing a document, it's.
Yeah, there will be times when the, well, as to documents, generally, as you've noticed, minutes are not taken in an executive session. Documents that are otherwise, well, most often, they might very well be draft documents that you would have reason to be examining, but they're not, you know, they're in working process, negotiations to be had. That you would have reason to be examining, but they're not, you know, they're in working process, negotiations to be had, that sort of thing. If a document that you might have seen in a draft stage during an executive session. If it is cited, referenced in the, in the open meeting. That can eliminate its status as a draft. As one of the exceptions to the Open Records Act. So, again. It's, when we're in a negotiation scenario, it's in the public interest that that document not be disclosed prematurely. So that's why the protection is there, but that can be eliminated if the document is referred to in the public session. Enforcement, Mike has alluded to. It hasn't been so many years ago, I think it was two thousand fourteen. The enforcement responsibility of the Attorney General or Latitude was expanded considerably. Previously, most of this was governed through complaints to the local county attorneys. Who were responsible for investigating and potentially pursuing complaints of violation, but. That has been transitioned to a centralized function of the Attorney General's office. They have staff devoted to the enforcement side, they also have a designated assistant who is available for consultation, they. Don't give straight legal advice, but. It's always, you know, if we have a question come up, it's, it's helpful, they have someone that would do it.
It's always nice, we can't tell you what to do, but we can tell you what'll happen if you do it.
Well, they're good about making, the conversation usually goes along the line where they can tell if we're looking at all the right resources.
But they definitely hedge their bets, they don't predetermine for you in advance.
Do you think more on?
I know unless anybody has any additional questions.
So, I just wanna say one thing, all of these rules apply to all of the boards and commissions of the City of Salina. So it's not just the City Commission, this is every single board and commission, and every single board and commission does receive. Training on open meetings, and they get, they get handouts that kind of go through these things, but as complex as it is. You know, for us and this board with all the experience we have, we have lots and lots of other people out there that are also trying to follow these same rules, so just be aware of that.
So, a board member, say Parks and Rec Commission. They, they are expected to abide by all these same.
Generally, their boards are a little bit larger, so the majority of the board is a little bit different, but they are, yeah, they are expected to follow the open meetings rules.
Do they know that?
They're trained on it.
What's fascinating is, is when you see a controversial subject or something like that, in either a county or a city. There, there won't be a, an executive session, but then without any debate, a motion will be brought up and it's five-zero. That, to me, is usually a pretty strong indication that there was some communication going on beforehand, it doesn't mean that it automatically proves it, but. Generally, that's pretty suspicious when I see that, so.
The, one thing about that, Mayor. I don't, it's just, I can't think of even an example where any, they generally would not have to be concerned about the executive session aspect.
Yeah, that's, there are a few boards that have to do, so like Law Enforcement Community Review Board has a specific section where it spells out, we do this in executive session. And I think maybe like the Disciplinary Advisory Board has that, so there's very few that have to deal with executive sessions, but the remainder of it.
Planning Commission's gone into closed session.
Yeah, I was gonna make that distinction. Jacob's point is, is right on, and it's generally those that do have. A role in relation to information relating to specific individual employees. There you could potentially have a personnel exception apply. But generally speaking, they won't find themselves in. Responsible for matters that would be the basis for one of the justifications for an executive session. The planning, well, anyway, that's generally something that it will be in a specifically oriented circumstance, and if it's. An attorney-client privilege-based executive session, like with the Planning Commission or something. You know, that will be able to structure and manage to, in that specific instance, because counsel is inherently. That's one thing the Attorney General has said, if you're going to have an attorney-client privileged executive session, you need to have an attorney involved in the conversation. The. To Mike's point, there is provision in the law also for what is referred to as a closed session. That is when any of the bodies are engaged in a quasi-judicial function. For instance, if you all were so inclined and had a, well, a zoning matter where it was. It applied to not the zoning code, but to a particular rezoning request. That, under Kansas law, is a quasi-judicial function. Which means that due process attaches to that proceeding. One of the aspects of that is that as you would deliberate upon that, if you wanted to. Go into, recess into a closed session to deliberate. Much like a jury might deliberate and develop your findings collectively in response to that request, you could do so. Now. Salina, again, I think to. The credit of governing bodies over the years have, have never wanted to do anything. Have, have been inclined to want to do anything publicly that they could possibly do publicly, so we just haven't had. Governing bodies that generally wanted to exercise that authority and generally deliberate and develop those findings. In the open meeting as best as possible, and with staff's recommendation. But there is provision in the law for those deliberations. That would apply to the Planning Commission as they make recommendations on quasi-judicial matters.
You keep minutes in a closed session?
Well, you would inherently have presumably. Documentation of, it will generally be the development of those findings that are the factual basis for whatever the. Ultimate decision is on the quasi-judicial matter, but that would be probably the extent to which the final. Work product that came out of that closed session.
You'd adopt those in an open session.
Yeah, yeah.
Come back to an open.
Yeah, then you have the collective thought. In, in those quasi-judicial functions, you're, you're serving as both the jury and the judge. So, it'd be much, the closest analogy, I think, would be to a jury or. A court that had multiple judges in appellate-level court. Where the governing body is serving in the role of having to make the findings and apply the applicable law and reach that conclusion. That all, that whole process can occur in a closed session and then be announced, so to speak, publicly.
And so, it may seem counterintuitive to some of the conversation we had about quasi-judicial matters and ex parte communication previously, but. And it may be an oversimplification on my part, but I liken it to a jury. It, it's not necessarily appropriate for the defendant or the prosecutor to talk to an individual juror in advance of the trial. Not necessarily appropriate for the individual jurors to talk to each other in advance of the trial. All of that should be, should play out in fairness to all the parties, so they know all the considerations that are at play and have an opportunity to respond to them. But then you can go deliberate in closed session if you so choose, and then come out and announce a decision and, and provide justification for the decision.
The Open Records Act. Of course, is intended to assure to the extent possible that public records are available. There are exceptions to man, uh. You assume that if it's a record in the possession of the city in this case, it is a public record. Presumed to be available to persons requesting that record, subject to whatever. Cost recovery, if you will, covering expenses associated with either researching or providing that information. There are a myriad of exceptions to that. Fifty-four, I believe, specific exceptions, one of which says. Or any other applicable law, so that's the hard one often, is to know what might be out there. But that is a function that is a staff function. The point of that is, it's not anything that you all have to find yourself dealing with very often. As city manager, Mike is, we're statistically required to designate. Those staff members that are responsible for the maintenance and the disclosure of those records upon request, and. I don't know if you wanna elaborate on how we do that, but.
Yeah, I was sitting here thinking, a community slightly larger than us often have an open, a public information officer for this specific purpose, and it is primarily what they do. We're not quite there, but depending on their request, it can certainly put us through our paces, so. We have someone in the police department that's versed in those records and, and police reports and what can be redacted and what can be disclosed. We have people in development services that are pretty used to kind of the routine request, I think we shared previously, we. We have kind of these stock requests that happen on a recurring basis for solar permits and certain things. City Clerk's Office fields some of them, and then Jacob is, might designate everything that's any harder than that. And they certainly can get complex, and Greg will get into some of this, but. You know, we, we're not compelled to create a record that doesn't exist, we do find our, we can get a very open-ended request for all communications on a topic. To anyone in any amount of time, we have an individual that, that was a cadet at St. John's Military Academy, I don't even know when, seventies or eighties. That has made open records requests from the entirety of time. We've had media sources make requests that are very open-ended, and that gets to the point of, we'll try to make some preliminary assessment of. How large of a response is that, make some estimate of time and expense to respond, and then we can respond back and say. It appears to us that this is what it would take to respond, this is the cost here, we're asking that you pay a deposit. And then we, within reason, try, we have to tread lightly, but try to say, with a little bit of refinement of your request, or. If you altered your request, it might not be as expansive, but you have to be careful that you're not trying to coach someone away from their open records rights, I guess you could say, so. And some of that, I think Greg plans on touching on, but it can get very elaborate, it can get very. Sometimes we have no idea what the, the actual point of the request is, and, you know, the, the person that fills out that request, their wording can be. Unclear and just make it very difficult, and then it can also be adversarial, where there, it's not a. Collaborated conversation about what is it you're looking for that's perceived as being defensive or non-responsive on our part.
When you have a large request, do you, are you just functioning with one employee, less is that employee. Work, I'm doing like an hour a day on this for.
We have a response timeline as well.
Yeah, it really just depends on the request, so if it's a large request, it's gonna come to me, and then I will. Generally, the, the large requests are things like, I want all emails to the city, you know, from this timeframe that say this keyword. And I can do, we can do those keyword searches, the problem becomes is that not all, not all information in the emails is just, I can't just run you a list of emails and send it. We have to review every single email, so we've had requests that came back with tens of thousands of emails that if we, if we ended up actually, you know, following through. Would have been, I would review them, and then we'd send them over to Greg, and Greg would review them and make sure that there's, you know, not anything that is outside the bounds. Of what the law would require us to provide, or redact, I mean, if there's stuff that has to be in, that pulled out, we would go through all that process, so it's a.
Are there agencies, I'm just thinking of a nice niche business, but are the agencies that contract with governments to come in and do this? I mean, like you might hire an accountant for taxes and or.
I would say it's more common for a city to have their own department or section of people that just handle these sorts of things, I mean, the bigger you get, the more, the more you have, and we, we don't have. It really kind of ebbs and flows, you know, sometimes you'll have a lot, some, most of the requests that come in are pretty innocuous, they're not very, they don't take a whole lot of time. The way that we have it set up is if, the first fifteen minutes is free, so if I, if it only takes me fifteen minutes to run a report or find the request, then whoever it is, it's. I don't have all the records right in front of me, but if the Clerk's Office has it or whatever, they will just pull that record and they will provide it. If, where it becomes an issue is if it's a very broad or a big request that is gonna take a certain amount of time, and what we generally do is we determine kind of the. The universe of all of the records that may be appropriate, and say, okay, this is how many records we have, we're gonna have to go through these, this is an estimate of time. That, that we think it will take us to get through the process, and depending on the request, I mean, that could be weeks, we could say. So, we're required to respond with them, to them within three days and say, we've received your request, and kind of give them the, the baseline of where we think we're going. But at that point, we would say, okay, we've received your request, request, it's gonna take us two weeks to get through, going through all this. And request that you provide some payment upfront before we go through all that process.
Two weeks.
And so, and generally, what I'll do is, is say, hey, if you narrow your request in this way, I can have it to you much sooner, or it, it's not gonna be near as costly. And kind of try and go through that process, and some people, they'll say, okay, yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll narrow it, and I also provide. You know, I provide people access to our web portal where lots of information is out there, so if somebody comes to me and says. I want ten years of information about the city's budget, I can send them a link to the website pretty easily and say, here's all the budget information for the last ten years. I'd be happy to print it for you, or whatever, it's gonna cost you this much if I do that, but if you wanna find the information on your own, you can, you can do that as well.
How do you determine cost?
Uh, cost is based on, we charge sixteen dollars per half hour of time that would take us to do that.
First teen, first fifteen minutes.
First fifteen is free and, and the remainder, now, and that doesn't, that doesn't cover the cost, I mean, sixteen dollars a half an hour doesn't cover the cost of my hourly wage to go through that process, I mean, it, it doesn't. And it doesn't come close to covering any of the legal review that has to be done. What's that?
Printouts.
Uh, printouts, I think it's ten cents a copy, we, we'll provide it to you digitally for free, but if you want us to actually print it out and give you a hard copy, we charge for that.
And, and I'm not inclined to redirect it to staff at a lower hourly rate, these, these get our attention, they are, they can become significant, I mean, one example. We had an individual make an initial request, and we responded to that request. Months later, they made a similar request, but it was broader, so we supplemented the additional information, knowing what we'd provided in the first response. They complained to the Attorney General that, I know they didn't give me all the information, because they gave me the information the first time I asked for it, they, we got no consideration for recognizing. The, the connection between the two requests and just supplementing with additional information. We, we've had requests where they're aware of a document, and because they already have it in their possession, and then they make an open-ended request. have it in their possession, and then they make an open-ended request, and they're gonna look and see whether it's in that broad response that we provide. And as we go through this, we did a search, they refined the search, it's fraught with peril, uh, if we miss anything, the presumption is that we're in violation.
And most of the, I would say, most of the requests that come through are fifteen minutes, we don't charge. I mean, it's not, it's not a big deal to pull the, it, it's the stuff that becomes, that's a very big, broad, you know, an email search, that's just gonna take us time, and you can't, I mean, so we do charge for those things. I would say most of them, you know, there's kind of a, a spectrum, I, most of them are, are not that expensive, I mean, maybe a couple hundred bucks, but then we have gotten to, I have gotten a request that resulted in ten thousand plus emails that we would've had to go through individually, and, um-
And so, we, we just make an assumption that-
And that could be thousands of dollars.
We're gonna spend this many minutes on each one of them times ten thousand.
So, for example, recently, we've had requests on animal shelter issues. Is that a fifteen-minute affair?
Uh, yeah, most of those are, I haven't had any that are, um, if they want, there have been some animal shelter requests that have cost, that have cost money, um, most of the ones that are, they're saying, there's specific reports that they already know that we provide, so it's a, it is very quick for them to run a report and shoot it, and so I will send that to animal shelter, they'll run a report, send it back to me, and I'll, I'll forward it along. Those are pretty easy. There are some reports that are not easy, so, for instance, dog bite reports, we've gotten requests for those. Dog bite requests have information on them that has to be redacted, so, um, you, you have to go through the, each one of those, and those, the, the things that have to be redacted on those are things like, uh, med- any medical information, um, if there's a minor that's involved, then we have to limit their ability to figure out who that minor is, um, so you have to go through each individual record and redact that. So, if it's, now, if it's been done in the past, and I have it, and it's available, then it's not hard to produce it kind of a second time, 'cause it's kind of, it's now a record that exists redacted, uh, but I have had to charge for this.
A dog bite, would that be now a police report?
Um, no, dog bites aren't, there, there could be a, a piece that goes to a, a criminal record that would turn into a criminal record, but they still keep just reports on the incident that happened that's not a criminal record. So, and, but those are all considerations that we have to look at, like, okay, is this a criminal record, does it rise to that level, you know?
And when it hits our inbox, it goes to the top of the list, it is on the clock, despite what else we might have going on, whether Jacob's on vacation, whether, uh, the appropriate staff aren't available, it, it goes to the top of the list. Now, we can-
The Attorney General's expectation is that it becomes a priority matter. We have the three-day initial response, we can explain why it's gonna take, what it's gonna take, and are expected to predict when we'll be able to finish the process, but it's not like, you know, hey, we're gonna work this in, to Mike's point, it's, their expectation is that it be top priority.
And so, I assume you're all familiar with the hot mic, uh, what that means in terms of media, elected officials on mic be, getting caught with a comment? You can have a hot mic moment with emails. If, if you're having a frank email conversation with me or with staff, that's subject to open records request. If staff are having email conversations, that's all subject to open records request.
And that was a point I wanted to make, the, speaking of the legislature earlier, statute excludes from the definition of public record, any record held by an elected official. So, you all are under that, that same exception. None of your records are deemed to be public records. Now-
It's a one-way street, though.
But, yeah, what caused me to bring it up at this point in the conversation here, any communication that you would have with anyone, generally, a, a, most likely, city manager's office, is obviously an open records from the standpoint of Mike's records, or any, if it's a need to communicate with anyone in the manager's office, it's a record on the other end of the transact, of the communication.
What about text messages?
Uh, yes.
But, there's a presumption, though, that there's a record of them? I mean, yeah, I don't erase my phone every day, some people erase it the minute they're done with that message, gone, others, like my wife says she's never erased a text message, I don't know how she still has memory on her phone, but, but she literally has them there from, you know, years.
Yeah, so, I mean, there are statutory requirements on record-keeping for the city, but I don't, I don't believe there's anything that says that you have to keep your text messages for a certain period of time. So, if you were in the habit of deleting them, you know, daily or monthly or weekly or whatever, then that wouldn't be a record that you had. So, if somebody said, "Hey, I want all the text messages," and you don't have any, there, there's-
Well, we, we have had that request in the past, and had to reach out to elected officials and staff and say, "Go through your, your texts, and anything that's responsive to this, you need to share." And I personally carried an Android phone until recently, and I, it wasn't something I consciously said, but I could delete a text, and then when I went to text you again, all of our text history within like, I don't know, two and a half, three years would come back. In fact, I kind of miss it, I, I want to transition to iPhone, I don't have that anymore, and so, um, you lose some of that, you know, whatever's in there that you might go back looking for, but-
In your position, well, for a politician, that would probably be a reason to get an iPhone.
I think it's a setting thing, I don't, I'm entirely sure, but, you know, texts are part of that.
And I haven't seen it in Kansas, but there have been a number of local government officials who have gotten in trouble by trying to use various apps, um, that either self-delete messages and communications and otherwise. So, just be cautious in any, if you, if you see an app that, you know, even if that's not your intent, some of those cause a lot of attention to people just because they're, they're intended to basically remove that, that record of the communication. Again, I haven't seen that in Kansas, but I have seen a number of local and even national, uh, elected officials get into trouble with using those kind of apps.
So, this is all good conversation, we got more coming, so we might need to keep moving.
Yeah. The only thing I was gonna add to that is, we now have statutory matters that are, were prohibited from disclosing. I guess the classic example would be documents that would have any reference to social security numbers or, uh, certain levels of personal information. That, again, complicates, you know, the role that particularly Jacob is in. We not only have to be sure that we're disclosing anything that, um, is legally required to be disclosed, we have to be watchful to not disclose things that are legally prohibited from disclosure.
And I think we got through it, but we, as related dogs, we had an assertion that we need to give a citizen an individual username and password to log into the software system on the basis of open records, 'cause they want to do their own research. We got it, we finally brought them around, but it started with that assumption.
Okay, am I correct that, uh, that Kansas tort claims act is the next, uh?
Yeah.
Little bit of history. Kansas court cases, for a number of years, uh, the court struggled with this matter of the, and the concept of the king can do no wrong, to where we are today in terms of potential liability of a governmental entity. The key event that caused Kansas to say, "We have to answer this question," because the cases would bounce between, well, was it a proprietary function, was it a, you know, a utility function, was it where the city is performing a service for fee, as compared to legislative actions or anything else that the city, that a governing body might be doing? When should a city be potentially liable for the actions of its employees? The Wichita State football team tragic, uh, accident, airplane crash, as everybody might be familiar, are old enough to be aware of that sort of thing, um, was the key event that where they said, the legislature finally said, "We have to deal with this statutorily." That was the genesis of the impetus for the Kansas tort claims act. It addresses when and to what extent is a city liable for the negligence of its employees. Negligence is a type of tort. A tort is a non-criminal action that results in harm to others, in a general sense. There won't be a quiz, but hopefully it's helpful to know that there are four elements, basically, to whether you have acted negligent toward someone, negligently towards someone else. The first question is, do you have a duty to that person? Has the law imposed a responsibility that you are expected to meet? The second element, as you might expect, is, did you violate that duty? The third element is, was that violation because of the harm to that individual? And the fourth is, did that harm that you caused because you violated that duty result in any damage to that person? So, the question on a negligence case is always, are those four elements present? So, that's enough of that, but that's when we talk about the tort claims act, it's always going to be an analysis of whether a city employee, and that's a broadly defined term for purposes of the act, it includes anyone you might think of, all the way from the role that you all are in, throughout the organizational structure. And Kansas adopted what is referred to as an open system. It presumes that the city is responsible for the negligent acts of its employees. Subject to certain substantive exceptions, you all are the beneficiaries of most of those substantive exceptions, because as you might imagine, it involves legislative functions, discretion, and even at the staff level, it involves certain level of discretionary functions, uh, whether you inspect, whether you don't inspect, whether you enforce, whether you don't enforce, those sorts of, you know, more, more difficult questions, but those that you are expected to perform in your respective roles. So, you have those sets of exceptions. Anything else where those exceptions don't answer the question is subject to a five-hundred-thousand-dollar limitation per incident, per occurrence, and that's the essence of the scope of the tort claims act. It's dependent upon there having been negligence in the first place. The question is whether one of the exceptions applies. If it does, then there is no basis for liability. If it's not under one of the exceptions, then it's subject to that five-hundred-thousand-dollar per occurrence limitation. That amount has been the same since nineteen seventy-nine, when the act was enacted, uh, and for whatever reasons, I can't necessarily explain, they just don't seem to go there, but it's still at that level. So, conceptually, any questions about that?
So, the employer, us, we could be negligent in our duty, but if there's no damage, then there's no basis for a tort claim?
That's, that is one of the elements for having a, an enforceable tort claim, yes, or an actionable tort. Now, we'll get to the next point, maybe, if I may, that's in the segue to the next point, as you might imagine, that often has to be judicially determined, whether the individual was negligent, and then the legal questions of whether one of the exceptions applied, and if not, what the level of damage or compensation should be. The city, as an organization, has a role in that, in that the city, by statute, has the obligation to defend that employee, if, if the employee was acting within his or her scope of responsibility, and if they cooperate in the defense. The city is statutorily responsible to provide a defense against a claim of negligence, and does, and does so through insurance companies, as you might imagine. The, uh, and also ultimately has, again, if that employee was acting within the scope of his or her duties, uh, the duty to defend and the duty to indemnify. In other words, if there is a determination there was negligence, they were acting within their scope, they cooperated in the defense, the city picks up the tab for whatever that damage is determined to have been to the person who claims to have been harmed.
So, it's gonna come up in a little bit, but qualified immunity?
That is, uh, a pretty involved topic. There are certain functions, judicial is an example, uh, the law enforcement is another example, of persons that depending upon the role that they're in, there is some judicial recognition of what is called qualified immunity, based upon the level of responsibility in carrying out those particular roles. Is that a fair summary?
Yeah, and, but if that, and depending on your acts, that can also be jeopardized.
Just one, for that first, uh, exception, if a person's going in, I don't know if we fix, let's say we fixing a gas pipe, uh, he's in the house appropriately to fix the gas pipe, but he then, I hate to be gross, but he kills a cat because he don't like cats, or steals something. The action against the cat or stealing is outside of his reason for being there, so we would not, even though he's a city employee, did something bad, we're not responsible for that, 'cause that's not why he was there.
Yeah, I think that's a fair statement. Where those usually come up is in the, uh, the category of what is referred to as frolic and detour. In other words, if you're supposed to be somewhere doing something, and you're on, you know, you're on the clock, so to speak, as a city employee, but you deviate from your assigned responsibilities, and someone is harmed.
So, that is a real term?
Yeah, frolic and detour, comes up, it comes up mostly in the context of workers' compensation claims, where someone, you know, claims to have been injured on the job, but it's determined that they frolicked or detoured, uh, and that's what resulted in the, in the injury.
Without going into too much detail, I last community, the day I arrived, I inherited a lawsuit, and the insurance company spent as much time and energy on the front end trying to document that we had a policy that was violated, either written or implied, to then remove themselves from the defense before- before they actually picked up the defense of the city and the employee in question. That was a seminal moment for me. That, that sticks with me, that they were very motivated to just keep us at arm's length on the basis of outside the scope of employment. They weren't successful, but they tried awful hard.
Yeah, we discussed the responsibility for reimbursement or indemnification. So there are protections there. The only thing I'd add, it seems like oftentimes we find ourselves having to assist employees that have gone to seminars where somebody felt compelled to scare them, to heighten, I guess, the attention level of the seminar. That's often the nature of, sometimes. And we can usually describe for them and assure them that, you know, these protections are designed so that they can use their judgment, do their jobs, and know that unless they just really, truly negligent in that function, there's protection there for them and for our reason.
And we touched on it here as well as the last session, but inspections is a good example. They have a general duty at large. They, we, they do not, nor do we have liability for overlooking an inspection item. It's gen, trying to ensure practices. I, I describe it as trying to keep them honest. And we have an obligation, but we're not going to catch every inspection item on the construction of a house or otherwise. We're transitioning topics, how about a five-minute bio break? Come back and we can be. So before we jump into this conversation, end of the day, yesterday, we got an email and then there was some contact with Clark Meisling in Linville. The person that was editorializing about our sign code as relates to Cozy Inn has filed suit. And some of you have indicated to me, you've seen it on social media or the news media yet this morning. I intended to bring that up at some point in, in the day, but it looks like it, the media's getting ahead of me. Suffice it to say, and I, I haven't had a chance to read all 147 pages of it or whatever it is, but equating the, if you read the editorial, just kind of picking up where that left off, but equating their signing to murals and wanting a federal court determination. I, I've told you all along, and Greg and I need to coordinate a little bit, but I think my response to me is going to be, we've been very mindful of the Gilbert v. Reed decision. We have been very deliberate in amending our codes, make them content neutral. We, we've paid close attention to the court cases as it relates to the distinction for commercial speech. And so we, we proceeded in what we understood to be correct interpretation of the case law. And we'll have to see how, how plays out in court, I guess. I have, I'm responding as we speak to an email from Jer Cooper from Solana 311. And she's peppering me with a, a list of questions. Mayor Longbine said that he was contacted, how should he respond? I'm, I'm indicating that she responded to you and then I've copied Holly on this email saying, let's set up a timing near the end of the day that we can get on the phone with each other and I'll be responding by half of the city.
Since that topic's on the floor momentarily and our city attorney is talking to us, once it reaches that level of engagement, is my official response? This is a legal matter now and it'd be improper for me to make any public comment? Not that anyone, that I know of is asking my.
Right, I, I guess I would encourage you to redirect them to me if you can. And yeah, it, something along the line, I, I try to avoid no comment. And, you know, it's something along the lines of, it is a legal question. I'm not prepared to, to respond one way or the other and it's for creative, the city manager. And I, I don't plan to argue the legal merits of the case in the media either.
So, so it was really filed in federal court?
Yes.
Yeah, I'll forward it to you. I, I wanted the opportunity to forewarn you. I'll forward you the email and the filing.
Well, it's, it's a First Amendment-based claim, both under the United States and Kansas constitutions.
A challenge in our sign code?
Correct. It does just seek a declaratory judgment, meaning and interpretation by the court. And injunctive relief, meaning an order of the court as a result of that review. It does not include a claim, a monetary claim of damage. It does refer to recovery of attorney's fees.
And I haven't had a chance to read it in detail, but it also seeks non-enforcement of the sign code. I don't know if that's temporary or, or permanent, long-term.
This could take years to be heard, couldn't it?
The, seems like a simple enough question.
I'm envisioning we have an executive session conversation on Monday about this.
Yeah.
And I'll forward to you the, the email that includes the filing. And you, it's public and you can take a look at that in advance of it. But it, it also calls into question the boom festival and the murals and the status of those while we're sorting this out.
And to, to Mike's point, we as a firm and in terms of the way I approach these matters, my, if I, if anyone asks me anything about it, my response would be the same as what Mike just suggested. We generally do not comment about cases in which we have any involvement. And I think all points lead toward having the voice of the manager's office addressing that as deemed appropriate.
So I'm, I'm open to suggestion, but I, my, my intention is to stress, we've been thoughtful about this. We haven't, this hasn't been us not paying attention and then being caught by surprise. We have taken a deliberate approach, which we understood to be compliant with Gilbert v. Reed case law and the case law interpretation of what is commercial speech and can be regulated as commercial speech. So, I'm jumping on, I'm not able to give you the, the template language of, don't reply all by way of my iPad. So you'll, once I get logged into our network, I'll forward you this email in just a second.
Should we go ahead on?
Sure.
Okay. I know you all are familiar with the ethics policy. And I, I do want to take us through some of the basics. But just to be sure, we use the time as you would wish. Are there just any questions that have been on your mind that you want to be sure we address?
I guess, and incidents will come up often, but just the subtle differences between material conflicts of interest and perceived. When, when one should yield to perceived conflict of interest.
The, the way this policy was built, the factors that are the guidance that you see there, I've forgotten, is that? Get them all on that same page?
I did not.
Yeah, that's what I thought we had, yeah, there we go. Between the, this and the following page, those are all, what I would say, are certainly appropriate, but are locally, more locally identified and unique to this policy. The rest of the policy, where we were involved, was attempting to, in the policy, address all aspects of Kansas law relating to ethical considerations for elected officials and employees of the city as a public agency. So that's, I don't know if there are any questions about these initial points that are set forth in the, what's section four of the policy, the general ethical principles. But that would be maybe the place to start if there are any questions about those. And the rest is, as I say, based on applicable Kansas law.
I don't know what comes under ethics, but there's an issue of predetermination. I mean, we all have opinions about an issue. But what, what constitutes inappropriate predetermination?
The context that it will come up in is when you're dealing with those quasi-judicial matters. The, in your everyday communications as elected officials on administrat, I mean, on legislative matters, I'm sure you address those questions at the grocery store or on the phone or where, wherever you might have interaction with a citizen on a legislative matter. The Reed specific ordinance is clearly a legislative matter. That's, you're making local policy. The distinction, the best distinction I can provide is the, the distinction between an amendment to the zoning code. The, what's a permitted use in an R3 zone? If you're considering an amendment to that, that's a policy question. It's going to be in the code. And that, you can say what you think about that whenever you want to whomever you wish. If you're dealing instead with a rezoning request, where you're talking about a specific piece of property, you have a code that tells you what rules apply to that specific piece of property. You have any number of factors that affect that zoning decision and you're trying to apply those factors and making the right decision. Kansas law tells us that that is a quasi-judicial role. In other words, you're acting much like a court might deal with a question where you are making findings of fact and you are applying those findings to current law as to whether that property should be rezoned or not. That's the classic, no question, that is a quasi-judicial function. The significance of that identification as a quasi-judicial function, that also happened in, I believe, 1978. And the, you'll hear the golden factors on a zoning case. That just happened to be the name of the party to the case. But it was handy because we now talk about the golden factors that are to be taken into consideration on a zoning case. But in that decision, the Kansas Supreme Court said, when you're making that zoning decision, you're in a quasi-judicial role. Which means that due process attaches to that deliberation. And to the point Mike was making earlier about those ex parte contacts, that's when all those rules and where we want to make sure that you all have the same information. And the other prong of that is in a quasi-judicial role, that you not reach a conclusion until you've heard all the evidence. So the predetermination question, you can say what you think about any legislative policy matter any day of the world and whomever you're talking with. But what you don't want to do is if you're in a quasi-judicial function, either in your own mind, reach a communicate, uh, reach a decision before hearing all of the evidence. And certainly not suggesting to anyone or telling them, yeah, don't need to tell me anymore, I've heard all, I know everything I need to know. There, just like you wouldn't expect a jury or a judge, you wouldn't expect a jury to make findings of fact or a judge to make rulings of law until they'd heard the whole case. That's where you don't want to, as I say, not only communicating it, but in your own mind, reaching a premature conclusion. That's the caution against any predetermination of a quasi-judicial decision that you're expected to make.
So I shouldn't walk in and say, ah, Jim Jones, he doesn't need this done, I mean, yeah.
Yeah, or.
Yeah.
Because you'll, now you all don't conduct the public hearing. The Planning Commission conducts the public hearing. And that's why that record of the Planning Commission's deliberations and what they heard is what you have a record of them. But as you know, we still take public comment on zoning matters when they reach your level. And the key is just not to go there too soon. And particularly not to verbalize that. I'll try to quickly go through, there's, there's two sets of rules we have to be conscious of. The first question is whether you have a substantive interest, a substantial interest, I'm sorry, in a particular business. And again, it's a business, not just a person. We'll get to persons later. But the, the statutory rules, Kansas law, it's a very objective test, as you've probably seen. It's, you know, are you an owner of a business? Are you an employee of a business? Has that business given you gifts without appropriate consideration? Or are you an officer or a director of that business? Now, there's an exception for 501(c)(3) type organizations, but still have to be watchful anytime anybody's an officer or a director. Or if you are a, either commissioned or fee-based service provider, has someone paid to the organization you work for, the business you work for, a sufficient amount of fees or commissions that you then have a substantial interest in the business that was paying those commissions? Those are the five math problems that address whether you have a substantial interest in that, in a business. So focusing on that, and as you all filed for office initially, as you recall, that was necessary to disclose those substantial interests. And you have an expectation that you update those annually. Staff and I, you know, unless there was just some compelling circumstance, figure it's not our business to be looking into any of your statements of substantial interest. Their public record, but it's, it is a governing body member responsibility to keep that current. There's a period of time each year, I think we're in that period of time right now, where there is an expectation that those be annually updated. So if you have a substantial interest in a business and they have a matter coming before- and they have a matter coming before the governing body, if it does not involve a contract, but is instead just a, a matter, you know, a rezoning question. If you, doctor, had, if the hospital had a rezoning matter, you obviously have a substantial interest in the hospital. But you're not disqualified entirely from participating in that matter because it does not involve a contract. The way that you, what you do have to do however, is that that has to have been disclosed on your substantial interest disclosure statement or at least be updated with that disclosure before you act on the matter. Now, we have a local requirement. Maybe you've noticed in the ethics policy that it, you had that scenario and you wanted to act on that and you had disclosed it by the filing with the county election officer. And you then, when it comes before the body, explain, yes, I've got a substantial interest. Yes, I've disclosed it and, but I do wish to participate. You legally can participate in that decision. If it instead had to do with a contract related to EMS service, is that related with the fire department? You could not, under any circumstances, participate in that item. There's only two exceptions to that rule on contracts and that is if it is a, the result of a publicly advertised bid process. Or if the cost of the services being addressed under the contract is determined outside, you know, by some other statute or it's somehow a predetermined amount. Those are the only two exceptions. Does that raise any questions in anybody's mind? That's, I think, the essence of the application. As I say, it's a math problem. Its beauty is that it is purely objective. The limitations are that as well. It is purely objective and sometimes doesn't cover every possible eventuality.
Who's the final arbiter in a great case?
Well-
Are the five of us the arbiter or the other four? Or do you make a unilateral determination?
Well, we have the benefit of, I mean, certainly much of the responsibility lies with you all as individuals in evaluating your, and being aware of your own situation. We, uh, between the city manager's office and when called upon, we certainly try to help as much as possible. But to your point, as far as the ultimate arbiter, I suppose I have found myself in that situation to the extent we could resolve it on that basis in consultation with the, you know, this, Mike, you know, I would do our best to come up with hopefully a helpful answer in that regard. If necessary, there is, the Kansas Ethics Commission does offer opinions. Now, they're pretty quick, but it takes a little bit of time. The reason I spoke with Mr. Hoppick a little bit earlier was making sure I didn't get carried away using him as an example without his permission. But classic example, a, a very fairly complex question actually in terms of the substantial interest question for Commissioner Hoppick in his work. Now, we know, given his role and relationship, if it was a matter involving specifically his business, we know he has a substantial interest in his own business. The question, the more complex question is, does he have a substantial interest in the customers of his business? As many as that would potentially be. And particularly given the fact that his company does work where their compensation is based on a fee associated with the service that they provide. To get to the punchline, I think quite prudently, with the assistance of his own counsel, Commissioner Hoppick sought an opinion of the Ethics Commission and they made a determination, I won't bore you with the details, but given how you got from point A with revenues received by land title services to Mike's role in the organization, it was determined that he did not have a substantial interest in those customers. And that obviously answered the question at the highest level, short of the court making a determination. We have a written opinion from the Kansas Ethics Commission and he, of course, has abided. It enabled him to, with comfort, act on matters relating to customers. Now, that's what we were going to here in a minute, is the other end of the spectrum and that is the other set of rules that we have to be watchful for is in Kansas, there is common law. In other words, not statutory, but court, a body of law resulting from court decisions that when the substantial interest test doesn't answer the question, we're compelled to also look at common law ethical rules. And as you might imagine, those are based more in that question of personal interest, either financial or just personal interest in a particular issue to a point that it would overcome one's obligation to the public. In the case of Commissioner Hoppick's circumstance, I think he has been extremely diligent in recognizing that if it's a matter that doesn't directly involve his business, but yet is work that they are performing, that the outcome of a decision of the governing body depends on whether a transaction is concluded that his firm is involved in providing title services for. He has acknowledged that certainly, I'm not suggesting it would in his own mind, but the clear perception would be that he might be influenced if one of those transactions didn't occur based upon how he voted. So that's the, Commissioner Hoppick's, it, that's the full spectrum of what we have to take into consideration and have been doing so. Thanks to his diligence, particularly on the common law side in, in abstaining when a transaction is pending.
If a court later determined that there was a violation of the substantial interest policy, would the action that the commission took that day be validated?
That is-
I mean, it could be months down the road when that determination's made.
That, that is a matter largely of what you would expect the court to address that. Generally, if it would be found that there was a, should have, a vote, a participant that should not have, have participated, we would normally circle back and address the matter publicly in terms of whether that disqualification that should have occurred would have affected the outcome or not. And unless a court told us otherwise, I think the matter would either stand or fall depending on whether that disqualified participant affected the outcome. If there was an effect on the outcome, then I think it's basically voidable under those-
Well, the reason I ask is because even though that one vote may not have changed if the person participated in the debate.
That's true. And that would be a factor that a court would likely take into consideration if they gave us the benefit of direction on the consequence of that. And that plays into also why abstention doesn't, that means not participating at all. And as you know, we've even gone to the extent of asking that the disqualified commissioner leave the room so no one could ever suggest that anyone was grimacing or, or any, even any facial expressions from the back of the room might be affecting anyone.
Lights flicker twice when something-
Yeah. The, um, I think as far as the application of the substantial interest test as compared to the, the more, far more subjective, uh, common law test, that's the essentials of those. Are there any other questions or points that you all or any of the other public administrators want to be sure that we talk about?
And we can't abstain just because we don't want to participate. We, we have to have a reason.
Yeah, that's, and that takes us, uh, that's a good segue as well to that next matter of you have a presumed, a presumed obligation as an elected member of the governing body to participate in all decisions of the governing body. Of course, if one is disqualified on either, on the basis of either test, then certainly it's mandated that you not participate. Again, with the distinction between how you can participate with disclosure on non-contractual matters and are absolutely precluded on contractual matters, subject to the two exceptions. We do get to that area where, given the level of involvement that anyone elected to the roles that you're in, would have been expected to be participating in other things, organizations, whatever, where you think, or you in your own mind conclude that, you know, no, it's not a, technically a substantial interest and no, they're telling me it's not a common law conflict problem. But yet you do not want, you have a reason that there could be a perception of bias is the term we've used. Given your involvement or your thinking toward a particular business or organization that has a matter before the governing body. We've provided that as the category in which you can legitimately say, I just don't want anybody to think that I'm influenced by that relationship, so I wish to abstain. So that is the purpose of that appearance of bias basis for not participating. We've never, I don't think we've ever had a question come up as to whether somebody was manufacturing that basis just because they didn't want to weigh in on a, on a difficult decision. But we'd have to, well, and that would become, I think, more a function of you as a body if you thought someone needed to be, uh, or if there were any concerns that you had as to whether someone was just bowing out without adequate basis for doing so.
And if some, and if we have a reason to abstain, are there some situations in which that affects the quorum and others in which it-
Yeah, that's, um, as we get into the discussion of the, of the rules and we can jump to that if, if you wish. In fact, it's, I had the, that chart in your, the resolution with your rules.
One person.
Yeah, rule twenty-two. And the reason that chart is there is because I knew my limitations on answering, doing that math sometimes on the fly. Because if one is disqualified because of a conflict, that changes the math. In other words, well, let me, let me put it this way. The case law tells us that if you are simply silent, don't participate. It's not that you haven't been dis, that you've been disqualified, but that just silence is generally viewed as concurrence with the majority or what would otherwise be the prevailing side among those who did vote. It's somewhat the reverse on the, in the case of a disqualification. It is not considered a concurrence, nor is it just inherently a no vote. It does affect the quorum and it affects the required number of votes for the majority. And that's, as you can see from the, from the chart, it's a descending scale depending upon how many members have been disqualified. Now, that may seem to be an exaggerated set of examples, but there was a time that we had commissioners with, a significant number of commissioners with substantial interest in a hospital. And have had not so hypothetical scenarios that could have occurred where we would, you know, be down to whether one remaining commissioner could decide on that. And that's why I knew I needed the chart. And hopefully it's illustrative of how that works.
I guess we only lose two now, right? For a hospital contractual matter, just you and me.
Now, the policy, as you know, goes into that consideration of the ex parte contacts and the admonition against predetermination that I gather between previous session and today that has certainly been discussed. Are there any questions about that?
Predetermination. There's an item coming up with the Planning Commission. I flipped through the agenda and I've kind of made a predetermination.
If you keep it to yourself and you're open to additional information.
As long as I don't influence anyone else.
Well, certainly, I mean, it's, you would have to have better control of your mind than I do of my own to not start having, you know, thoughts on a particular situation as you see it based on what you know. I'd say that the concern is that, yes, you know what you know when you know it and you probably have a thought on that based on what you know. But one, you wouldn't want to articulate that to anyone because it's gonna be hard to convince them later if you truly had a change of mind that you hadn't already made up your mind. So we can't totally defy human nature, but it's best certainly not to articulate.
And in the rezoning matter, citizens submitted a letter and I read that and I said, I agree with you.
Sure.
If it helps at all, I think I would make a distinction between predetermination, meaning you've, you've made up your mind and it's not gonna change, to a preliminary determination of, given everything that I currently have, I'm, I'm leaning this way, but you haven't told anyone, my mind's made up, I'm not open- But you haven't told anyone, my mind's made up, I'm not open to additional information. And, and then when it comes time to deliberate, you take into account the entirety of the information that is either in the staff report, offered up by public comment, offered up by the applicant. You may end up where your preliminary determination was, but you have to be, you should be open to entirety of the information.
And what if I watch that planning commission meeting that's upcoming?
If you watch it?
Yeah.
As opposed to just reading the record?
Yeah.
And if he watches it and the other commissioners don't watch it?
Yeah, I.
And, you know, are we not to keep up on that stuff?
Well, my opinion is any, I can vote either way up until the question is called. I mean, I, all of us have an opinion on any topic, I mean.
But are we not to be exposed to any of the information till it comes before us?
Then I don't go out seeking information I know I'm not supposed to have. But that's just, just, just me, but I've changed my mind thirty seconds, fifteen seconds before.
That information is publicly available to everybody. So it's not like it's secret information. If it was, if it was the applicant came to you individually and gave you information, then that would be a different thing. But because it's publicly available, it's available to you, it's also available to the applicant. Everybody has access to that information. So, so anybody can use it to, to, to make their determination.
So it's okay for me to keep my eyes wide open?
I'm looking at Greg, but I, the other thing that I would add to that is, you know, coming out of the planning commission, there's typically findings, there's a recommendation. If there's anything compelling to you that's impacting your decision at the city commission level that's not in those findings, is not consistent with the planning commission's recommendation, then that would be an item worth disclosing to the rest of the group. I, I review the planning commission meeting and a compelling point that's influencing my decision is X. And that way that everybody knows that as well, the commissioners, the applicant, the citizenry.
I think our, our public expects, you know, your eyes can be wide open, but they expect your mind to be open up until the vote stays.
I think Mike's point is a, is a good way to address the point you're making. I, I don't think any of us would say, no commissioner, don't look behind the curtain. Don't watch the video of the planning commission meeting if you're inclined to do so. But if, I would say you would want to review the record that you're provided of the planning commission minutes that comes with the packet. And if you saw something that, you know, the demeanor of something, or if you thought something just frankly didn't make it into the minutes or whatever, that's the type of thing. If it, if that distinction between the two affected your thinking and you relate that, call that to the attention of your fellow commissioners, I think everybody's good. And then it's up to the others to say, well, okay, I'll, maybe we need to look at that. The, the whole objective is to be sure that you all have the same information.
Well, that, and I still look at it from the applicant standpoint. If they're, you know, some of these things are multimillion dollar deals. And if they're trying to move their project forward and there's something that's standing in their way and they don't have any opportunity to know that, that's not forthcoming. And so that's why, you know, the scenario to me, and it's multiples obviously, but planning commission's headed in one direction, you listen to the, the planning commission meeting and one individual citizen came to the podium and made a compelling point that takes you in a direction other than the planning commission's recommendation. At a minimum, it feels like the applicant should know that that's a persuasive factor that's impacting your decision so they can try to respond to that. I don't think you have to tell them in advance, but just in the interest of full disclosure.
And the whole idea is to support the defensibility of whatever decision you all as a group come up with. Courts are going to give high deference to your determinations. There's two things the court would look at if somebody challenged a zoning decision, for instance. Is, was it reasonable, the decision you made? And was it lawful? Was there anything that occurred that was unlawful in your consideration? They're going to give high deference to where you ended up. If somebody is going to challenge, try to challenge that, they know they have a high bar on the reasonableness test because you've given, you have broad discretion in that area. What they're going to be looking for is, did anybody indicate they predetermined before they heard all the evidence? They made a, evidence of predetermination? Or were there ex parte contacts that were not disclosed? Because what, the only, the, the direct line of attack of your decision is whether they can disqualify any of them. So that's why we're concerned about that.
And I think it goes without saying, but there's some obvious practical difficulties. If we've made a decision and everybody's perceived it on that basis and now it's challenged and it's called into question. We may have issued a notice to proceed, we may have executed a purchase order. They may have proceeded with a closing or an investment on property. It's awful hard to unring the bell.
We're into lunchtime, I think.
I think we're scheduled through twelve thirty, so I think.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay.
Yeah, that's what had me, had me confused.
Is there any willingness to, to eat and talk at the same time?
That's what I wondered, that was what we wanted to.
Okay. Sean, you mentioned a case out of Ohio recently?
Yeah, there was a recently, a city, two gentlemen, I use that term loosely, came up over just parading the city commission and I believe this is only going to hold me to that. And so they removed them from them and the city ended up settling for six figures. They weren't quite using the same number of words, but they were certainly very liberal in their use of the number of the words. So the city ended up reaching a six-figure settlement for removing them for that reason.
So I'm, I'm also going to hand out an article I found over the weekend from the Missouri municipal league. But it's a case out of Boston, Massachusetts, where they had a practice of displaying a flag for other organizations. They had the US flag, the state flag, the POW flag, the city flag, and then they would fly flags that were for causes and other organizations. They, they had a staff person that was in charge of administering that. And with the best of intentions, trying to maintain separation of church and state, he turned down a religious group and they got sued. They, and two levels of court cases prevailed, but the US Supreme Court overturned them, noting that they had, had two hundred and forty-eight flag raising events over a twelve-month period. They never denied an application until this particular one. They had created a free speech forum and they violated their free speech rights by denying them flying their flag for a cause. And, and to me, that's very analogous to our current approach to proclamations. So I told Greg, we play all this and then get ready to be peppered with questions. You mean to tell me that they can do this, they can't do that? But these, to me, are much more real world scenarios than the theory that we've talked about in past orientations. But it's a little unfair to Greg to just throw that out there and say, okay, sum all that up. But.
Well, the, I don't know if anyone has questions right off the top or if, what I was going to do is explain, there are reasons for the language that you see in our guidelines for citizen participation where we outline in that piece, the, under the Kansas Open Meetings Act, obviously your meetings are to conduct the business of the city's business. The statutory right that anyone has is to observe those, observe that meeting and your deliberations. No one has a statutory right to say a word in those meetings. We have addressed the matter of, you know, what, particularly from an audience standpoint, what is not allowed in terms of forms of expression. But that language in the statement of that, of those guidelines is quite intentional because it outlines that and outlines the compelling public interest that we're trying to address as you conduct the business of the city. It's our obligation, to the extent that we attempt to regulate that, to do so in as limited a fashion as possible. That, you know, obviously we tailored these restrictions from the standpoint of what could persons, what could people do that would disrupt your ability to conduct the business of the city? So everything is both setting out those compelling interests and how it is that what we do limit is an attempt to, as narrowly as possible, address those interests. Now, the question that, the, the sixty-four thousand dollar question, again, for any of us that are old enough to know what that references. The big question, when it comes to a citizen forum, is whether you wish to have one or not. Because if you do, that is an entirely, I mean, that sets, invites an entirely different protected level of participation by whomever. And yet, the safest course by far is if you choose to have a citizen forum, time limit is certainly appropriate. That's in that category of appropriate regulation of time, place, and manner. But to get to the punchline, opened up like that as a public forum, open to any citizen, is to sit back and listen.
For three minutes.
For three minutes. Now, certainly up to the discretion of the governing body and under the leadership of the mayor to determine whether and the extent to which you might choose to respond, either in the moment or subsequently. You heard reference to fighting words. That's one of the categories of behavior that is not protected. There are certain things or what one can say or do that doesn't have the benefit of first amendment protection. One is clear and present danger. And if I may read just briefly, the state cannot prescribe advocacy or the use of force or the violation of the law unless the advocacy is directed to inciting or producing imminent lawless action and is likely to incite or produce such action. The test is intended to ensure that the law only punished incitement to illegal action as opposed to advocacy of abstract ideas. The speech must be directed to a specific person or group. The next is fighting words, offensive speech, hate speech. As you might imagine, there's a whole body of case law that attempts to identify what that is and what it isn't. Commercial speech is under a different, what's referred to as an intermediate test. And even lying. Government may not prohibit lying or false statements about a particular subject generally, absent a showing that the speech causes some specific harm or is otherwise unprotected. Now, those are efforts to briefly encapsulate obviously a lot of case law, but I don't know where, if that's, if that's helpful or where you want to go with, or where the commissioners want to go with that.
At the risk of sounding like a broken record, because I've said this individually to all of you, I'm sure, there's just common sense, common perception. I completely understand that in terms of values and the way it used to be. And I, it would be first acknowledged that case law doesn't necessarily comport with what we in conservative Kansas just instinctively think we know. Case law is, is what we have to rely on and that was a prime example. And there's other things that we're dealing with, our First Amendment audits where we have individuals showing up. And, and it's happened in, in Salina, it's happening in the state of Kansas more so, where they come and they're intentionally trying to incite a, a reaction from a, a public employee, whether that's law enforcement or otherwise, by videoing in a building, on the right of way, on a sidewalk. All of that is protected as well, you just have to be mindful of that.
One other aspect that might be helpful, there is the matter of, maybe you've heard the reference to prior restraint. In this First Amendment context, we saw that in the video where the person speaking was interrupted in anticipation of where they were going with their comments. And that is a recognized, there's, the law recognizes the prohibition of anticipating that there's going to be any of these unprotected expressions and stopping someone before they actually articulate what you think, where you think they're going. Quick story, the ultimate example of how that had to be applied in the city of Salina. Then acting manager of the, well, he was the act, was the act, I'm sorry, was the manager at the time of the bicentennial center. This is years ago, back in the late eighties, when they booked the show, The Chippendales. Well. You're in Salina? And that person had visions of the Chipm, Chippendales, the cartoon characters. And it, it was a show of those, you know, made up from those cartoon characters. Well, that wasn't the show. And the show was The Chippendales as that trade name is now known. And so the question was, do you shut it down or what do you do? Well, the advice had to be, no. We have to go forward, allow the show to appear. And we can't anticipate what might happen. We have to watch and we can be watchful. And if it goes over the line, whatever that line might have been, fortunately it didn't. So we didn't have to stop the show. But the point being, that's a classic example of having to avoid what would be prior restraint in anticipating what someone might say or do before they say or do it. So that's another consideration in the context of your meeting.
I was going to say, Salina was really out there in the eighties.
Yeah, yeah.
We did insert at the last minute highlighted versions of the language in our agenda and I just wanted to point out. And I just wanted to point out that we built in that discussion we had about the consent agenda. We've clarified that the speaker can have visual aids with them at the podium while during their time to speak, but still precluding, you know, signs in the background waving and trying to gather attention beyond when they're at the podium. I think that's generally the gist of it in terms of the additional sections. So anything else in closing, Greg?
No, it's, other than that, maybe the point in our, the material that goes, the written material that goes with the agendas, we do make the point, it is possible for you to have a limited public forum. The discussions, the special meetings, the forums that preceded the development of the Law Enforcement Advisory Board is an example of that. There were discussions specifically related to police department functions. That was an open forum. No one tried to regulate what was said. It just had to be on that subject. And that's an appropriate, if you predetermine the scope of the subject matter, then that's permissible. You can conduct such a forum, you can limit the conversation to that subject. You can't affect what anyone might wish to contribute to that discussion of the subject.
Is that what the school board implemented, where you have to submit written?
You know, I haven't seen their program exactly. In discussions that have been had, I mean, this is a topic of discussion, as you might imagine, that city attorneys, Kansas City Attorneys Association continuing education programs. And a number of cities do require that you essentially sign up for the opportunity to speak and to identify the subject
So I've watched the school board meetings as that was kind of playing out. And, and these are just my observations, watching the verbal explanations during the meetings. But they started by saying that you could only speak on topics that were on the agenda. So for us, that would mean public comment with an agenda item, but no citizens forum. Then, for a while, they went to, they just didn't take public comment at all. And I don't know whether signing up and identifying the topic carries with it the requirement that it has to be an agenda item or not at this point. The other thing I think I've shared with you before is we, there's been two presentations in a short amount of time. One for the league in Topeka, and one was the Attorney General's Office here in Salina. And in both instances, they acknowledged that they felt like the vast majority do not take public comment on agenda items. And that one of them kind of singled out us without realizing, he's saying, I was surprised to learn that there's, there's a city or two in the state that allows public comment in every agenda item. Like, how crazy are they? And I didn't rebut it, but thought, you know, it's been effective for us. It hasn't been overly problematic. But that's kind of back to Greg's point. We could choose not to, but as soon as you open the door, crack. We have to be mindful of free speech. The other, other thing that we get tied up with every now and then is protests and on rights of way and in the downtown. It used to be Fred Phelps and his group. And then more recently, there was a group taking free will donations for pro-Trump paraphernalia in the right of way at CBS, which we ended up having to really parse that out. But that's, since it's right of way, CBS didn't have the ability to tell them they couldn't be there. And since they weren't charging, it wasn't commercial speech that was regulated. So they ended up saying they have a right to be there, that we can't tell them they can. Again, counter to what your gut might tell you.
It is legal and within our rules to limit the time and limit the frequency of comment.
I think that's sufficiently established as being in the time, place, and manner category, which is the type of regulation that we can impose, as long as it's, again, in fulfillment of those compelling public interests, primarily being the efficient operation of your conducting the city's business in your meeting. So I think the time limitations and, you know, the non-repeat scenarios is.
So when we got asked at the last meeting how it was they couldn't speak twice, and I volunteered to talk to them after the meeting, I took my version of the agenda and underlined every instance. There's discretionary language in there. They may be given the opportunity, and there's multiple instances where it indicates some discretion on part of the mayor, and that's what I intended to give them. They ended up leaving before we spoke. The concern I have is if we respond, then it gets a little gray as to whether we've opened up a two-way communication and they get an opportunity to come back and rebut your rebuttal of their comments. All the more reason to just give them their three minutes and move on to the next one.
And we do say in our rules that the speaker should not expect to engage in a two-way dialogue. I think that sometimes, I know that's hard sometimes to not want, you know, we have a tendency to try to answer the questions. I mean, from my perspective, it would be better to handle those questions offline and say, hey, let's, we'll talk about this and we get you the full answer. Because, you know, when they're up there and they're peppering you with questions, we don't know everything about everything at every minute. Now, Mike's pretty good and knows a lot of stuff, but if he misspeaks, you know, on one occasion when he's responding, then that's something that that individual can take, you know, the next time and use it against him when he comes to the podium two weeks, two weeks later. So preference would be to not engage in a two-way dialogue and say, let's handle those conversations. Let's answer your questions offline. And we're willing to meet with anybody. I mean, you know, if somebody wants to come in and sit down and talk and get more information, we'll make that happen.
I mean, it hasn't happened as much lately, but there for a while, we had a spate of people that thought they would bring something up in citizens forum and then you were compelled to vote on it. And so we also have language in there that speakers should provide their comments for the commission's consideration at their discretion. There's no obligation that at that meeting or otherwise, you have to take action. They're just giving you information for your consideration. Anything else you want to cover, Greg?
On this aspect, or I didn't know if there were any rules, questions, I don't want to hit through those if we want to wrap up here.
So how does YouTube video end up?
It's, it's so recent that don't know the answer yet. I assume, he said he's going to file suit. I assume that's forthcoming or may have been recently filed. I think that video is like thirty days old. Yep.
I think the only thing I would add, of course, the other aspect of this part of the discussion had to do with the rules as far as your commission meetings are concerned. That's probably more a matter of, you know, if there are particular questions, we could try to answer those at any time. The only point I think maybe warrants, and that is oftentimes it happens inadvertently, but that is the previous question or calling the question phenomenon. And I should explain, Mike, I'm officially the parliamentarian. Mike is certainly expert on.
I took an hour and a half college credit class once.
Anyway, Mike, Mike knows those rules and you'll see us matching notes if a more difficult question comes up. But it's instinctive, I think, sometimes for any, in any body where someone is tired of listening and will say, I call the question. As though, and instinctively, everybody generally stops and thinks that nobody can say anything. Well, that actually, I mean, it's a recognized motion. But what it triggers is it has to be seconded. It triggers an immediate vote and has to have a two-thirds majority. So in your case, four votes as to whether discussion stops or not. So again, it's available if somebody feels compelled to use it. But we will, if it happens, we will feel compelled to say, okay, here's what that triggers and here's the vote you have to take on whether or not you want to end discussion or not and all the rest of that. As you would expect, and those of you that particularly have been in the, in the mayor's seat, that's kind of into your domain as to, you know, when it's time to gather that everybody has said what they needed to say and it's time to potentially move on to a vote. So it usually works better if, if the mayor kind of senses that and moves to the point where you're ready to take action instead of any individuals triggering this, that more formalized process.
But in the event that one just isn't picking up on that, the other four could say, we've talked about this enough, we want to move on by way of previous question. All right.
Unless there are other questions that.
Thank you. We're almost on schedule. I will transition to Debbie and financials. And as I said earlier, Greg and I have a one o'clock, so you'll see me cut out of here in time to get the Zoom aspect of that meeting set up. And then in addition to that, I am going to try to deal with the media inquiries about the signed case. So I'm going to work up with Greg and Aaron's help and Lauren and the consultants' help, kind of a pat answer and a press release. So I intend to come back, but I can't tell you exactly when.
So this afternoon, we are going to talk about, and this is a very high-level discussion. And the purpose is to, just so that you can get a view of how the finances work, where the money comes from, where the money goes, things like that. But certainly anytime you have questions about how the financing works or something else, feel free to stop by my office, call Mike, leave Mike a question. I'd be happy to sit down and explain things that are going on at any time. So feel free. But like I said, this time today, we're just going to go over some basic how governmental accounting works, look at our specific funds, talk about the general fund in specific, because that's probably our biggest fund and it's used for the most purposes. Kind of look at some of the revenues that we depend on the most. And then some of the oddballs like transit guest tax, gas or gas tax. And then talk about some of the public-private partnerships, things that are going about around star bonds. We'll revisit American Rescue Plan dollars for those that weren't around when that happened and kind of where we are in that spending. And then kind of just give a big overview of the budget process and get your feedback as far as kind of what you anticipate and what you need for that process. Because ultimately, you'll be making decisions about the spending and that type of thing for the city. So we'll go through those things as well. So first of all, I just wanted to give you some overview of some of the demographics of the city of Salina. And not that you need to know these, but sometimes these do influence how we make our decisions as far as what are expenses going to do, what is revenue going to do? Should we anticipate more sales tax because our population's going up? So there's just a lot of things that feed into making some of these decisions. And so I just wanted to touch base with kind of where we are in that perspective. So according to these, this information, the population from the Kansas Division of Budget, we went up a little bit in 2022, as you can see. That's a hard one, I think, for them to know for sure, but that's what they were reporting. Our top ten employers in 2022 compared to 2013, there's not a lot of difference. You can see that Salina Regional, Swans, the school district, Great Plains, those are still our major employers over, after even the ten-year period. Unemployment, it's gone down significantly since the COVID in that era where we had that. And we're down to just about two percent in the city of Salina. The next slide, and this one becomes important as we make our decisions, is the inflation factor. So you can see we peaked sometime in April, June, July of 2022, and that's coming down again. This is a number that goes back and forth, but typically, we stick around about the two percent level as a Midwest region. So we look at, look at just the region in the Midwest of this, of the country. The other one we look at a lot and we talk about a lot is the city pull factor. This is kind of a convoluted number, but it basically takes the sales that the city of Salina does and compares that to the state overall and tries to figure out how many, how much we're pulling from other areas outside of our own county. And so you can see, for a long time, we have it around 1.5%. So that means that we are pulling in about one and a half, a half of a percent, or twice as many people are coming in from out of town to buy things here that are then are here. So our pull factor was one and a half. It's dropped significantly. And when that, I saw that happen, I thought, well, that's odd, what's going on? I reached out to the state and I did some little research and that, you know, a lot of the, the economic people say, you know, you shouldn't look at it as a one-time number. You should look at it over, as a trend and where's it going and how does that, you know, look? And so I'll be really curious to see after 2023 what that number does. Because at the point we have right now, it looks like it's trending down a little bit, but until that time, it wasn't. So I'll be a little bit curious to do that, to see that. And I also did, on the next slide, I did a little bit of research on other cities. What are other cities, what's happening to other cities? So this graph is the top twenty-five cities by population in the state of Kansas. And if you focus on the green line on all of those, you can see a lot of cities are losing their pull factor. So I went in an extra step and I called the state and said, hey, what's going on? Is this a mistake? What's going on? And her response is what I provided there, that's her email response. And basically what she said, and what I was thinking as well, was a lot more people are buying online. So you're not having people come to the city of Salina and buy tack, buy their things. So that's, that would create sales tax for us. But if I'm in Ellis County and I buy online, it's no longer a sales tax for the city of Salina. It could be a use tax if they purchase it from Walmart in Salina and it gets delivered to their office. It's then a use tax for us, it's not a sales tax, because it's not being delivered in Salina. That's how the sales tax is created. And as people are using online purchasing more, I think we're going to see those, that sales tax influence go down. But as we'll see, our use tax is also going up. So not a one-to-one configuration, but it kind of made sense in that respect that a lot more people are ordering online, they're getting it delivered outside of the city of Salina. And so that, that's where the tax base is instead of in Salina, instead of picking it up in Salina.
So what you're saying, say a resident of Minneapolis that used to come here to do all their shopping, now is doing a third of their shopping.
Online.
Online.
Mm-hmm. So it's being delivered to Minneapolis, so the tax is being based in Minneapolis instead of in Salina. So they're getting the benefit of that, that tax. And that's, you can see that in some of the smaller cities and the, and the pull factor numbers are going up because now all those people that were coming to us from those smaller cities are now ordering online. And so it's all coming into their own base, their tax base. So we'll keep an eye on that one because it does, it could have an effect on our sales tax. But like I said, the economics people say, don't, don't panic, but keep an eye on it to see what the trends are doing. So we'll keep an eye on those in the near future. So that's kind of the financial, the economic demographics that we kind of look at and we try to keep, stay in focus of when we're trying to make decisions. So I wanted to just give a basic overview, and some of you have heard this before, of kind of what is government financing? If you think about the government, it is not truly one enterprise. It's not one big pot that's going into supporting the government. It's really considered a collection of smaller entities or programs that fund specific programs. And they call those funds. So when we talk about a fund, the general fund, the special sales tax fund, the gas tax fund, those all have specific purposes and reasons for occurring. So while they're all city of Salina, they all have their own record, book of records. They all have their own financing, they all have to support themselves. They're all part of the government, but they're all broken up into those individual little funds. And so that's why we hear that. And we have to balance that and carry those books. And so if you ever look at our audit, you'll see every one of those funds has its own financial record. And that's how it's set up in the financial system. They all have their own financial records. So all their cash is separated and all their bills and expenses and all their revenue are all separated into each of those funds.
And they also have different rules. I mean, so there's different, you know, the money, depending on how the money went into that bucket, it could determine how. into that bucket, it could determine how we can actually use it and expend it. So if we collect a whole lot of water, money in the water and wastewater fund, we can't just turn around and use that for parks, because there's rules attached to those funds. If that makes sense.
Right. And really, that applies to almost every fund except the general fund. Everyone has a specific purpose. Some of them are statutory. So for example, the gas tax fund, it's statutory that that gas tax has to be spent for a specific reason, and so that's all we can spend it on. So that's why it's all separated and we have to know what those purposes are. And we question that often, you know, we'll look and say, okay, can I go, for example, for streets, could I go buy a truck that's going to repair the streets out of that fund? If you look at the requirements, then you can determine yes or no whether I can do that. So we do have, we do have some laws and regulations that kind of rule how we do things financially. The first and foremost one is Kansas budget law. It's a set of statutes that require us to establish an annual and submit a certified annual budget, make sure that we follow that budget. If we violate that budget, we obviously have to report that in our financial reports. We also have what we call the revenue neutral rate, which is our tax-led statutory statute. We'll talk about that a little bit later in more detail. We obviously follow generally accepted accounting principles, government accounting standard practices. We all, we have our own local financial policies. We've set purchasing policies, we've spent spending policies, things like that. And we have various resolutions that actually drive some of our financial policies, like petty cash and purchasing cards and things like that. We have resolutions that we've passed to kind of drive that, those policies and make sure that we had those guidelines in place to make sure that we're doing things the way that are expected. So from a fund perspective, we have 20 budgeted funds. So these 20 funds are, all require an annual budget certified to the state of Kansas, and you can see them, I listed these both by the 2022 ending fund balance and the preliminary fund balance at the end of 2023. I will say there's probably, maybe not horribly significant adjustments that could be made to these, but some, because there's still some entries in January that hadn't been made to these fund balances, but you can kind of get a picture of where they're going. But we do have, because they're budgeted funds, I just wanted to explain, and this is very confusing for a lot of people, even at the staff level, that a budget is a budget that it authorizes you in spending. So if I tell the state that I'm going to spend, that I'm going to spend up to a million dollars, I cannot spend a million and one dollars. I can only spend a million dollars without going back to the state and adjusting that, because as I submit that budget, it has to be balanced. I have to prove that I have the resources and revenue available to cover the expenses that I'm, I want to spend. Those resources could be fund balance, they could be anything, new revenues, anything like that, but I have to prove that I can cover whatever expenses that I have for that particular fund. So for example, and what's confusing to a lot of people is, if I don't spend that million dollars this year, can I just spend it next year? No. We tell the state every year how much we want to, how much we need to spend. If it's a million dollars this year, it's a million dollars this year. If I don't spend that million dollars, it doesn't get put into next year's. I've already told them what I'm going to spend next year. So what happens if I don't spend it and I've, my revenues have come in, that all just goes to the fund balance. Then the following year, I could take that money, because now it's a resource, it's a balance, and I could put it in my budget and say, I want to spend it next year. But with the way the timing works, because we submit our budgets so early in the year, if I saved money in '23, I've already done my '24 budget, so I really don't have it in my pocket. I do, but I don't. I'd have to do an amended budget to, in order to spend that leftover money from '23, if that makes sense. But that gets very confusing to people when you're spending, is I can only spend what I said I was going to spend. Doesn't matter how much I have in that pocket, I can only spend what I said I was going to spend, without doing an amendment.
So every budget submitted to the state?
Yes. Every fund that is required to have a budget. We have several funds that are not budgetary funds, so we don't have to submit budgets to those, and we'll talk about those here. Your capital reserve funds, your special funds, those don't have to have a budget. But these 20 must have a budget, and they must, we must follow that budget annually.
And the state doesn't really care about necessarily the line items, how it breaks down. They really just care, what's the top, what's the bottom dollars you're going to spend this year? They want to know if we're going to spend $42 million in the general fund.
Right.
That's what we tell them, and if we hit that mark, we're okay. If we're going to go over that mark, then we're going to have to go back and say, hey, we're going to spend this additional money and this is why we're doing it. The budget document that you get will be a couple hundred pages, I mean, once it's finally, the finalized budget document. What the state gets is.
One page.
Basically one page for each one of these, one of these different funds.
Funds, right. And that's true. So you could, we could spend more money in the fire department than we said we were and not have to do a budget revision, because somebody else may not have spent as much. Like Jacob said, it's only on that high-level fund level that we have to worry about that.
Now, we care about that.
Yes, we do.
We're going to manage those individual departments within those budgets, but the state really is, they only care about the big number at the end.
Right. That's why when we get to the end of the year, we only have two or three budget amendments. If you looked at the details of some of those bigger funds, like water and wastewater, if they had a major wastewater catastrophe and had to spend extra money out of that particular division, because if they could cover it out of other savings, they would never have to do a revision, a budget amendment, because it's at the bottom line, the overall budget, funded budget amount. We're going to add something.
I was just going to say, as Debbie's already said, we have to have a budgeted, but if we don't have a budget, that doesn't mean that money is lost, it just goes back into the fund balance. So it is still there, it is available, we just have to get it budgeted in the future in order to be able to spend it, so.
Each fund is, so you actually send 20 of these sheets of paper and not just one?
Yes, yes.
And that's actually, I mean, so in Clark County, Washington, which is a much larger county, 500,000, I had just under 200 funds, which was a nightmare, especially because they were still doing it manual budgeting, but that just gives you an idea, so it becomes, I mean, you had literally dog bite funds and a fund for everything underneath the sun. So 20 is comparatively small compared to many jurisdictions.
And it's really, it's driven by statute, whether it has to be budgetary or not. And when that budget, that fund is created by an ordinance through you, the statute then drives the purpose of that fund and whether it has to be budgeted.
So why would the central garage be a requirement and not?
It's considered an internal service fund to the city, so it's kind of like a business, but not really. It's providing a bit, a support to the city in general. So in order to track that separately, which at some point somebody wanted to do, it had to become its own fund.
You wouldn't necessarily have to.
No.
So there are some that are required by state law to be separate, and there are some that we have locally decided that we want this to be a separate fund.
Right.
So Central Garage is one. You could wrap that up under the Public Works budget and just have, it could just be part of their budget and not worry about it. The reason we pulled it out is because we take money out of other funds in the general fund and we put that, put money in to Central Garage from those other funds. So when the Parks Department has a vehicle that they have maintained, Central Garage sends them a bill, and they pay the bill out of that general fund item and it goes into the Central Garage. So it's just a, it's just how we've decided to do the accounting and keep track of what department is spending money on what different functions.
And we're also charging outside entities for that service for the Central Garage, so that's another reason to have it separated, to make sure it's supporting the fees that it's, that it's actually spending the money on. So we'll go through a few of these funds. The first one we'll talk about is what the purposes of some of these funds are. The general fund is by far the major fund for any city. It's always called the general fund, it's just what it is. So it supports administration, which is your HR, your city manager, your media, your computer technology, your finance, your development services, any of those administrative divisions or departments that the city provides a service to the public or is required to kind of run the city in the background. We also support all public safety out of the general fund, which is your fire department, your police department, public works, which is engineering, streets, traffic, and flood control, and then all of our parks and recreation is supported out of the general fund. So if you think about that, that's a lot of what the city does and what they provide is coming out of the funding of the general fund. The sales tax capital fund is another one of our major funds. This was created to capture that special sales tax that we implemented. It's been around forever, but it was increased back in 2016. It's supporting some debt, which was, the initial debt was for some particular projects that's set aside that goes into the debt service fund. It supports economic development, tax stabilization, and then capital spending, that was all, and we'll talk about this a little later, it was all designated in that promotional information when we tried to get, when we got the sales tax increase back in 2016.
Does that special sales tax fund have a sunset date?
It does, 2036.
2036.
And that'll, I'll show you that later when we get into that detail. The sales tax economic development fund is just for that, for economic development prospects and projects that are, come through the city. It's being supported out of the special sales tax, but it is in its own separate fund, so we can track that. The economic development fund also supports Salina SEDO, the Economic Development Organization, and Salina Downtown, Inc., as all part of our economic development for the city. Special revenue funds that are budgeted, this is a list of the budgeted funds. Arts and Humanities is obvious, BID Business Improvement District, Special Parks, this is supported by Special Alcohol, this is one of those funds that's very specific for what a spending is good for, and that is from the statute, it's for the purchase and establishment and maintenance of parks. The Neighborhood Park Fund is a fee that's collected from new residential building fees, it's a $200 fee on a single unit. That funding is set aside by our own code to be used for parks within that specific neighborhood. So every neighborhood that gets developed, all that, whatever the money comes in in that neighborhood gets separated, set aside, and then when there's a park funding or need, it can be used for that particular neighborhood. The Tourism Fund is supported by transient guest tax. It supports our commitment to the Salina Chamber of Commerce, T-PAC Fund, operations and debt, and now with the new amount of TGT that we just put into place a couple years ago, the facility improvements. Special Alcohol, that's a fund that's very specific also, and the way we kind of contract that out, this is also supported by Special Alcohol. So Special Alcohol Tax is divided in three. When we get the money, it's divided between the Special Alcohol Fund, Special Parks Fund, and the General Fund. So each of those funds gets one-third of that Special Alcohol Tax. The Special Alcohol portion, the one-third of that, is for the treatment and things like that of addictions and things like that. So we grant that funding out to our local establishments that provide those services. So we'll bring that to you every two years to kind of get those grants set up, they apply, and then we set up that funding for them. Tony's Pizza Event Center, that's supported by transient guest tax and the general fund transfer, and obviously that's for the operations of T-PAC. The former Schilling Air Force Base Environmental Fund, we did set that fund up a few years ago when we got the settlement from the DOJ, and that's specifically for the cleanup at Schilling. The Special Gas Tax, I mentioned this one earlier, it's supported by Special Gas, and it is specifically for that construction, reconstruction of streets and highways. It's got, it's a little liberal, because it's kind of transportation or modes of transportation, so there's a little bit of leeway there that you can use, it not, just has to be a street, but it could be a sidewalk or, you know, something like that. Then we have four, what we call enterprise funds. We treat these as business funds. We call them enterprise funds because they support themselves with their own fees and provide a service that they're charging the fees for, and that includes the sanitation fund, which includes the recycling center, the solid waste fund, which is the landfill, the household hazardous waste, the golf course fund, and the water and wastewater Then we have what we call some internal service funds, and this was like the central garage, those are internally supporting the city. So workers' compensation, the health fund, our self-insurance health fund, and the Central Garage are all considered internal service funds, which are, like I said, services provided to support the city operations, basically. And there's kind of self-explanatory on those. Then we have a whole list of non-budgeted funds, and I provided for you, not on this slide, but the next slide, kind of a description of those. It's very small, I apologize, but I knew for sure somebody was going to say, well, what's the blah 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 fund? And I was going to say, I don't know, you know, but there's just so many of them that they have their own purpose. So we basically have a group of reserve funds, that would be the water fund, reserve, solid waste fund, and if you recall, a few, a couple years ago, we set up the parks maintenance reserve fund, the fleet maintenance, street buildings and facilities and vehicle funds. So we set those upside as non-budgetary funds, so that we can transfer our sales tax allocations into them, and then as projects and needs became, needed, we could spend that money out of that fund. The problem we were running into, and one of the reasons we created this, was because we were allocating specific amounts of money to these particular items, like parks maintenance, and they wouldn't spend it. So it'd sit in the sales tax capital fund and get lost. And so we said, our intention is for them to get that allocation, so we set these funds up so they could be set aside and captured and maintained in their own fund balance, and it wouldn't get lost and spent on something else. We have a few donation funds. Animal shelter donation fund is by far the highest one. PD has a donation fund, Parks Fire. And then we have a whole slew of special revenue funds, and those are specific for that revenue. So like the 911 fund gets fees from your telephone bill, you get charged a 911 fee, that goes into a fund at the state level, and that's for support of the 911 system. There's several of them. The federal grant fund, I would, I would tell you, by far is the biggest one, but that's the one that we had captured our American Rescue Plan money in, is a federal grant fund. There's some journal entries that have not been made in there, so that's a little higher than it really is, but that's kind of from that perspective. You'll see on the state grant fund, it shows a negative balance. The reason for that is that's a reimbursement grant, so we had to spend upfront for an EPA grant or an EDA grant, and then we have to submit for reimbursement, and so once that reimbursement comes, that'll go back into that fund for, to cover those costs. And like I said, when you get your reading glasses out and you want to read all those that's on that next page, it kind of gives you a description of what the purpose of the fund is, where the revenue comes from, and, yeah, for all of those kind of minor funds that are out there.
And if we didn't have, I mean, these funds really allow the most flexibility, so if we didn't have reserve funds set up like this, we'd be doing 15 budget amendments at the end of every year, because you just don't know, I mean, particularly with grant funds and stuff coming in and out, you don't exactly know when it's going to come in, when it's going to actually hit, hit your books.
Right.
Donations, you just don't know when that's going to happen. So this allows us the most flexibility. Doesn't mean that the city commission doesn't, you know, manage this, it's part of our overall budget. Just because they say non-budgeted funds, doesn't mean we don't actually budget them. We do budget them with the city commission and we get your approval before we move or do anything within those funds.
Right, right. It just does, it just means we don't have to send that certification to the state, is basically what it says. And we have the ability to spend the revenue when we need to spend it, as opposed to tell them exactly what year we need to spend it, because sometimes we don't always know. So then I want to talk a little bit about kind of sources, how do we get these resources? Part of the budget is revenues and resources and then expenditures. Those can come from the fund balance, as I mentioned earlier. If we don't spend it, it gets put in the fund balance, just like you, it gets put in the savings account, and you can spend it later if you need it. We charge rate fees, we have specific rates in the comprehensive fee schedule, we charge taxes, so we get, that's part of our revenue. Those change by natural year-over-year growth, so when our assessed valuation goes up, when sales in general go up, when inflation goes up and so prices go up, so sales tax goes up. We have increases in any of those directly or indirectly, is basically what I want to say. We also have transfers from other agencies or funds, so if we have specific, we'll see a little bit later, some inter-fund, inter-transfer funds, those can come in, any agencies that support us or give us funding, those are part of our revenue and resources. And then on the expenditures, the things to kind of consider, take into consideration is there's two kinds of expenditures. There's ongoing expenditures that are year after year after year that consider, you know, we're always going to have a personnel, utilities, office supplies, things like that, and then there's a one-time expenditure. A one-time expenditure may be, okay, we're going to go, we're going to go buy a boat or something like that. That's more of a one-time expenditure that we don't necessarily. That's more of a one-time expenditure that we don't necessarily, we won't do again for a long time, if any time. And so when you're making decisions about expenditures and revenue and how to spend it, you have to really remember that ongoing expenditures never go away, one-time expenditures do. So if you have a million or a thousand dollars in your bank account, you could probably go buy a new bike, but you couldn't sign a contract for a rental on a bike for 12 years because it was more than that. It's ongoing, but you could go buy a $500 bike, and that's a one-time expense. So that's kind of some of the things we have to take into consideration when we see these fund balances, is if we're making decisions on ongoing expense changes, we have to know that those are going to accumulate and keep rolling forever until we change them again, as opposed to a one-time expense that maybe we want to set aside for a particular project or something like that, that's just going to drop the fund balance, and it's never going to have an effect on, it's not going to have an effect on it again. We also have consistent and unpredictable expenses. A perfect example of unpredictable is gas prices. Now it's commodities prices because we've seen the cost of goods go up so high. Consistent, we know, are rents. Personnel to some extent, because we can control raises and things like that. The rates of taxes aren't going to change dramatically, so those are more consistent charges, and then the unpredictable ones. We also have required, and we have discretionary. We certainly are required to pay our people, but we certainly aren't required to buy new office chairs or to remodel an office or, you know, something like that. So we do have some of those discretionary, just in your own life, you have two, required and discretionary spending. So we have those at this level as well.
Yeah, I think it's important to note, I mean, in the last few years, what we've really been trying to do is figure out all the expenditures, everything that we have out and plan it out in the future, so we have as much consistency and we kind of get away from the unpredictable things as much as possible. So that's why you've seen long-term capital improvement plans, long-term vehicle and equipment replacement plans, long-term, we're trying to, long-term planning for infrastructure improvements, all those things, so that we can plan that out, and we don't end up with these large spikes in budgets where one year we spend $4 million more than the next year, that sort of thing. We've really been trying to kind of level load everything as much as possible so that we can be predictable about how we, you know, levy taxes, how we collect taxes, how we set our fees and those sorts of things.
Right, because we certainly don't want to say, okay, we need to spend $10 million extra next year, so we have to raise your taxes by five mils, and then the next year we've got to drop them by four mils, and the next year we're up by five. I mean, consistency is good. We've done it in the Water Fund for years. We try to level out those increases in those fees in order to anticipate future expenditures, and it makes, it helps people. Because even as a citizen, in your planning, if our, if our spending and our charge to you is consistent, then it's easier for you to plan your life.
And there's a lot of places, you know, Water, I think, is a great example of places where that gets communities into trouble. All of a sudden, they need a new wastewater treatment plant that's going to cost $40 million to build, and they got to increase their water rates by 25%. Well, we have very intentionally been raising our water rates between 1%, 2%, and 3%. We will look at that, every year we look at that and go, okay, how much, these are the projects that we have, how much do we actually need to raise revenue in order to offset that cost? We're very, very intentional about that because we don't want to put you guys in a situation where you have to make a decision to increase by 10% or 15% or 20% in one year, because that'd be, politically, that'd be pretty bad, I think, for all of us. So we're very intentional about those types of things.
And there still will be those unexpected expenses. We all know that. You know, we had a compactor out at the landfill catch fire and burn down beforehand, but this minimizes that impact so much more, so you're not having to not only replace that compactor, but also purchase a large number of new vehicles all at once, rather than having on a consistent pattern. So we know that there will still be unexpected expenses, but we're trying to minimize that as much as possible.
Right. So that becomes, that's why we try to reiterate those planning pieces as much as possible, and we can't know it all. I mean, we just can't know it all. So from a revenue perspective, we kind of look at what our current resources are and what our future revenues might look like, and to kind of set that expectation. So in our budgeting process, we're looking at how much revenue we have. Well, first of all, we should be looking at how much expense do we need to spend? That's the, that's the first basis of our budget analysis. And then we have to look at, okay, how much revenue do we need to cover those expenses? And the response is, what do we need to do to that revenue to make sure we can cover that expense? Well, part of that conversation is, do we need to raise property taxes? Do we need to raise fees? Do we need to make sure that we're covering those expenses? So as part of the revenue part of that expectation, we have to look at what types of resources they are. Are they one-time influxes of money like CARPA? Are they ongoing like sales tax rates? There's also restricted, as we spoke about earlier, some of the sources of this funding is restricted, so we need to make sure we're tying that to the appropriate places. We do have one-time windfalls occasionally. Through COVID, we saw that several times, where we got some money for COVID. Gas tax got a bump up in COVID because of something they did in that calculation. So there's some of those things that we see there. A lot of times what we do, and we look at historical data, a lot of budgeting is historical data. What have we collected in the past? What is the trend doing? What do we expect the trend to do? We're not magicians by any means. We don't have a crystal ball, but we can look at that historical data and see what it's done. We can even go back to years. For example, we've been back to 2008 multiple times, when the economy crashed and everything happened back in 2008. What happened to what, to us, you know, or something like that? So as things are happening in the economy, cities and states' governments are always behind in response. So we can kind of look and see what's happened before and things. There's just a lot of data to look at to make those decisions, so we try to do that. As Jacob mentioned earlier, we're trying to establish that baseline of what we need. What is our baseline of expenditures that we need to support the current operations of the city? That's before we offer any new programming or any new services or anything like that. What do we have to have money-wise to provide the services that our citizens deserve and demand? And so we're trying to get that kind of lined out. That's probably the most difficult thing to do because there's a lot of fluctuations in that stuff, so. I will say over the last few years, probably in the last 15, 10 to 15 years, up until the last three years, we saw no growth. We were barely making it. Our net income was, we were lucky if it was $500,000, $200,000 a year. In the last three years since COVID, with the, with the push of sales tax, we've seen franchise fees go up. We've seen in one year, interest rates go up. That's, that interest rate change in itself brought the city over $2 million and change in one year. That's from 0.25% interest to 5%. So it's huge, and the problem is we never know. We don't know what that interest rate's going to do. We can kind of ask and speculate and things like that. But I, the story is, before these last few years of all these changes that have been happening, we were just getting by. We were just, the revenue was meeting the expenses, but now we're in a little bit different predicament where our revenue has grown, and so we can have an adjustment, we can make, we can try to see what we want to do with that growth. And that's a big discussion we're going to be having at Strategic Planning, like Mike said, about what do we want to do with that growth that we've, we've kind of had the benefit of accumulating over the last few years. Now that we've kind of generally talked about it, I want to look at fund balances, and we'll look at all of them, all of the budgeted funds and in general, not all of them, but most of them. And then we'll look specifically at the General Fund, Sales Tax Fund, some of those in more detail, because as we ask you to make these decisions, it's important that you kind of had a better understanding of those. So from a fund balance perspective, the General Fund, you can see, was pretty flat until about 2019. I will say there's a couple of things that have happened in here. We mentioned one-time influxes and things like that. The $1.2 million that we got from TPEC for their naming rights in 2017 helped that fund balance, that boosted that fund balance a little bit. In 2019, prior to COVID, we were seeing a time where we thought we were going to be short, so we did implement several changes in some one-time transfers. We did a, we did a health insurance suspension that went to the General Fund. We did some transfers that normally would have gone to debt service tax or from the sales tax into the General Fund because we had some concerns, so that boosted that a little bit. 2020 by far was our, our year decision to go to work share, so we had a significant savings in personnel, and that enabled us to boost that fund balance. Since then, like I said, the boost has been sales tax, franchise fees, in 2023, interest income, a little bit of EMS increase, but those last few years is the phenomenon. You can see the 10 years before that, that just didn't exist. The Debt Service Fund is the next, really property tax related. There's two funds that get property tax. That's the Debt Service Fund and the General Fund. So the Debt Service Fund, you can see, it kind of fluctuates back and forth depending on what we're doing, but it's a little bit easier to budget too, because you pretty much know what your debt payments are going to be for the next year, except for your new funding, so it's a little bit easier to target those. The other thing, the things we can do with that funding, if we have excess funds, is we could pay things off early. We do have to close out projects into that fund. So if we debt finance a fund, and for example, we thought we were going to spend $500,000, and we spend $520,000, so we have to take that additional $20,000 out of the Debt Service Fund. Doesn't happen a lot, but you do have to account for that. It's, like I said, property tax is probably the biggest influence on that one, is the increase in property tax revenue. The next two funds that we'll look at are Sales Tax Capital Fund. The resources, the revenue for these, both of these funds is sales tax, so you can see that there's increases in these fund balances. I will say in 2020, we delayed, as you recall, if you were here in 2020, we pretty much said, we're not spending anything. We didn't spend anything that year because we were, we didn't know what was going to happen. So we basically didn't buy any new vehicles. We didn't do any, a lot of project, a lot of street projects or anything like that. That enabled us to put some of that money back. 2021, 2022, you can see those are really fund balanced from sales tax, the increases in sales tax coming out of there. Same with the economic development, the low, the drop in 2021 is the support we gave to Schwanz in 2021 for their project of $650,000, and then we replenished that fund out of the General Fund in 2022, just to maintain that kind of $750,000 balance is where we wanted to be on that one. That, by the way, I will say, is assigned 3.9% of the special sales tax. So whatever is collected in the special sales tax, 3.9% of it, and that's by your own resolution, is, goes to the Sales Economic Development Fund. If at any time we wanted to change that, that would be a direct, a policy decision from you all.
And a pretty good portion of that is spent every year on our, with our contract with the EDO, so it's not growing on its own, it's not, it's not going to grow at that 2.9% or 3.9% level.
No, I think the last time we looked, we were bringing in maybe $400,000, and we were spending $378 or 400, almost close to $400,000, between the EDO contract, which is $275,000, and SDI, which we increased this year to $120,000. So we're spending $395,000 a year just in those two agreements, and we may be bringing in with increased sales tax a little over $400,000, maybe in the 420 range for that particular fund. So having to replenish that was important because we really didn't have anything left to give out as an incentive. The next group of funds are those special funds, the Special Gas Tax, the Special Parks. As you recall, the alcohol, Special Alcohol. These are supported by the Special Alcohol and Special Gas. Special Parks Fund, it can be used for any park-related. So I will say that during this time, just prior to 2019, 2018 is when the Park Master Plan was created, and so they were still trying to get their arms wrapped around, how do we implement that master plan? So there wasn't a lot of spending coming out of there. In 2021, we made the decision to use that fund for some well-needed, much-needed equipment replacement for the Parks Fund, so that's the drop in that fund for that year, and then it's building kind of back up. Typically, what they use this fund for is playground replacement. So they schedule playground replacement in here to about the tune of about $200,000 a year, and that's about what it's getting. So if you look at the Special Alcohol collection amount, that fund is getting one-third of that fund, that collection. So it's getting about one-third of, right now, it's getting about one-third of $800,000.
And we do have a replacement plan now that's set out for 15 or 20 years, so there are some years where they'll buy a $90,000 piece of equipment, and then the next year they'll spend $300,000. So it's just dependent on what park comes up on the list, but it is, so it does kind of look like it goes up and down, but it is intentional on how we spend that.
That's correct, because the cost of replacing a park at Hawthorne is much different than Jerry Ivy or something like that, because, just because of the value of the size of those parks. Special Gas Fund, we try to use this funding, we use it both for operations like signs and street, street signs and street maintenance type things, cameras and things like that, as well as street maintenance for like chip seal and things like that. So it's used for a couple of different items, and we are intentionally trying to get that fund down and utilize that fund more, so that we can get that, that down to more of a target fund balance. You'll notice I put the one-time COVID payment that was a peak. That's one of those one-time increases that we saw that particular year. The next page is more Enterprise Funds, the Sanitation Fund. You can see spikes, a little bit of a dip in there in 2021. That was the cash purchase of the carts when we went to automated trucks, and then we've got the payment, the debt payment for that going in there. The Solid Waste Fund, you can see its fund balance is up in the $6 million range, and we did intentionally in the 2024 budget include a one-time transfer. The thought is to get the money out of the operating account and get it into a reserve account where we can use it for capital improvements, when the bulldozer goes down, when the, you know, for those things that we need to set aside some bigger money, not only for that, but for closure and post-closure, because we'll be required to do that by law if we ever close any of that site. We'll be required to do some maintenance and follow-up for those things. So our intention in 2024 is to do a transfer. It probably won't be $6 million because we didn't end up with that amount of money, but we'll look at how we can get it back down to a level closer to its intended target of $750,000 by the end of the year and get that into some sort of capital reserve fund. The Golf Fund, most of the time supports itself. I will say it does not support capital improvements to the golf course. That typically comes out of property tax payments, out of debt or something like that. It has required a couple of transfers in 2020, obviously with COVID. 2023, we did have to transfer another $10,000 to maintain the positive balance, but it's one of those smaller funds that they don't have much margin. If the weather's bad and people can't golf and they can't bring the fees in, then, you know, that, that has a big effect on them. I would say the two funds that are the most difficult to manage, as far as that's concerned, is the Golf Fund and the Central Garage Fund, because they're very small dollar amounts, so there's not much margin. So if there's a $20,000 issue, that has a big effect on those particular funds, whereas that doesn't have as big an effect on something like the General Fund, who has a $40 million The next fund is the Water and Wastewater Fund. We kind of talked about this a little bit. You'll see their fund balance is going up intentionally. I don't think, I think people see this fund and they think, gosh, they got $20 million in that fund, but you've got to remember, we're spending $44 million on a water plant, and that has to be paid off over the next 20 years. So we have intentionally, as Jacob said, tried to level out our fees. We have a very sophisticated mechanism for trying to project and things like that. This fund and what we need to have the fees do to try to capture everything that we can think of as going to happen in this fund. So we, and I've got that on the next couple of pages, I can kind of go over that. But some of the things that they, that we've done is, they've got water mains, so they have a lot of things going on, and nothing, as Martha would say, nothing in the water world is cheap. So one water line could be a million dollars, whereas, you know, or $20 million. So we're spending a lot of money. So we're spending a lot of money replacing water, lead pipe water lines. We've got a wastewater plant that we're having to deal with because of regulations. We built a new water plant because as Norm would tell us, we, we're going to need water and we're glad we have that. So we've added, and intentionally we also try to do maintenance enhancements, two million dollars a year out of cash. And we also have two million dollars in that now is going into water main replacements out of cash instead of out of funding, instead of paying interest on those, those notes. We're, we're taking that funding out of cash now. So if you look at the next two pages with your reading glasses, well, and I just wanted to give you this so that you could see just the depth of information that we track just so that we can see where these numbers are going to go and how, how just a small change affects it. So we look at every expense that's there. We, we project that out based on a percentage of what we think is growth. We take every project that we're financing and we include that financing cost in there and the, the annual payments in there. And then we calculate what the rates need to be to match that expense. And while you see on the purple line going across the first page, which I cut off on the second page, sorry, that our fund balance at the end of twenty twenty, this is an actual, at the end of twenty twenty-one was twenty-three million. If we continue to go out that number, you can see by the twenty twenty-seven projection, that number's dropped thirteen million. As I put on the second page, we will hit four, five million dollars, which is the target, five million dollars, which is twenty percent roughly of their annual spending. By twenty thirty-four, we would hit that target amount. And that's kind of where, in this model, it drops to that number and it starts to go back up because we've now paid off some debt. We've, you know, we've gotten, kind of turned it around. And that's all based on a certain percentage of increase. In this model currently, we have one and a half percent, I think for the next three years, and then two percent for the next ten years or something like that.
Does that include new users coming online? Do you anticipate that too, or is it just increase on current?
We increase on a very small, a one percent increase of users per year. So we do have a, we do have that number in there. We haven't changed that forever because we haven't really seen it yet. We hover around twenty thousand five hundred water users. If we saw that starting to increase, hopefully we will with all this new building, we could increase that one percent a little bit.
I'm okay with being conservative. I just didn't know if we were.
Yes, we do increase that number.
Yeah, and we review those numbers every year. So depending on, you know, what we actually spend and what we actually bring in, then we can, we can adjust that. So, I mean, three years ago, we were projecting three percent increases out all the way till twenty thirty-four. Because we've not spent as much as we thought we would or had more money coming in, we've been able to adjust that down. So it's something that we certainly look at. And if, if, if new users was a thing that caused us to think that we were going to have an increase in revenue, then we would adjust it down.
We, we account for growth, yeah, we account for growth in new users and consumption and sewer. So we kind of look at what the averages are and, and kind of use those numbers going forward. But we do put a growth factor in there for users. And we will, this will be part of the budget process that we bring you back in the summer. The last few funds that I wanted to take, just take a look at are the health fund. On your slide, it looks like it's significantly lower, but I did double check that because it looked odd. There was an entry made after this graph was made for some premiums that weren't in here. So that fund balance truly is at the end of twenty twenty-three, right now, a little over three million dollars, which is closer to our target. Our target's about three million one hundred or three million two hundred. Based on our, we, I don't know if you recall, we did a whole study session and conversation about how do we determine what that rate, what that fund balance should be for that, both that and the workers' compensation fund. So that's where, kind of where that's leaning and, and what we do with that fund balance goes in or above or below that. And we haven't had to do anything yet because we fell pretty close to what that was. The central garage fund, you can see down there has fluctuated a little bit. I would say twenty twenty-two is probably because of gas prices, unanticipated gas prices at the time. So that one's, like I said, one of the ones we really have to keep an eye on because it's such a small budget. So that's all the funds in general, kind of where they're at today, how we look at them and how, how we kind of consider them. So let's take a little bit bigger dive into the general fund because that's really our bread and butter. That's where most of our funding comes from. And so I want to take a look at kind of what are the revenues, what are those sources, what do those trends look like? And then what are the expenses? What do we anticipate those look like? And then kind of have, have some discussions or at least put some thoughts in your mind about what we need to discuss kind of going forward. So as you can see with this particular graph, sales and use tax are about thirty-three percent of the revenue in the general fund. Property tax is about twenty-two percent. And then external, I'll, I call it external franchise fees because the water department does pay a franchise fee, but we consider that internal. It's about twelve percent of our, our fees or our revenue. And this was from twenty twenty-three. So you can see those three factors are the majority of our revenue. So the rest of them are small, but, you know, impactful if we would take them away. And we'll look at most of these a, a little bit farther as we go, go in the future.
I think it's important to note here that we don't have very much control over most of the revenue sources that we have. The things that we really have control over are fees and charges, property tax, and there's a little bit of other inter-fund, you know, transfer stuff in there. So thirty percent is about what we control. The rest of it is well beyond anything that we have any, any ability to control. So that's why sometimes that makes it difficult for us to, to budget. And it's why property tax is always a focus because that's the only, that's really the revenue source that we have the most control over, the most ability to bring in funds if we were to need them.
That's true. And we'll talk about that as we, and what those kind of factors are that affect those things as we go through these different revenues. The next one is kind of interesting because it shows you by each of those sources over the last, I don't know, ten years, what those numbers have done. So that first group of columns is sales tax. And over the last ten years, that growth has been about four and a half million dollars. But you have to consider in that time, we had a rate increase in twenty seventeen. That's why, you know, we see a big number there. And then if you think about it over, over ten years, that's about four hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year of growth. In property tax, assessed valuations have gone up. Our mill rate has not really gone up in that timeframe. It's probably gone down. But that growth over ten years is about three and a half, three point three million dollars or three hundred and thirty thousand dollars a year. And of that seven hundred and eighty thousand dollar growth, that's only one and a half percent of our fifty-two million dollar budget. So it's, it's a big number for our budget, but it's still, that we need a lot of that other stuff to, to reflect it, affect it. Some of the other spikes in here you see is investment income. That's this year. TPEC naming and the other contract, other information. The rest of these are pretty flat. Sometimes they have, you know, fluctuations, sometimes not. But yeah, for the most part, until you get to about twenty twenty-one, everything was pretty flat. I mean, a little bit of growth, but not, not significant. So now I want to take a look at, within those groups of revenues, what is it? What are those groups of revenues? First one, sales tax. That's by far our largest influx of money. We, the city has a sales tax rate of one point two five percent. Of that point five percent or forty percent of it goes to the general fund. That's general sales tax. The special sales tax is point seven five percent or sixty percent. That goes in the sales tax capital fund. And then of that sixty percent, point seven five percent, three point nine percent of it goes to the economic development fund. I put this graph here just to show you, that's the rates over the past. So that rate went up in twenty seventeen. Prior to that, it was point nine for about ten years. And then prior to that, it was point seven five. And that was the total city rate for the city of Salina. If you look at the next graph, this is the, the sales tax rates for all of the cities in Celine County. Looking at ours, and ours is nine point two five in the city of Salina. Six point five of that is the state. One and a half percent of that is the county and one point two five percent of that is the cities. If you look at the rest of those eight percent, the eleven point two five percent, ten point two five percent are CID districts, which is special sales tax that's applied only to those retailers in those particular districts. Those are mostly the downtown or the hotel CIDs. But this just kind of gives you a view of what all of the rates are in Celine County. The next slide then just gives us kind of the history of what sales is doing. And you can see from the, the first slide on the left is sales tax only. This is the city, cities portion, which is that forty percent that goes to the general fund. And you can see there's fluctuations, and this is by month. And I will say, we collect sales tax two months after it's actually spent in the field, in the, at a retailer. So two months after you spend your dollars at Dylan's, the city sees that sales tax. It's just the timing of the cycle of it. And sales tax is very cyclical. It's high in the fall when people are shopping for, you know, their things, which we then get in January, February, March. It kind of pumps up again in about June after people get their tax returns in April. And then it kind of levels out and lowers until we get it through the end of the year. So there's, there's some cyclic, cyclic, cycles to it. The graph on the right-hand side is a growth graph, and this is growth year over year. So from one year to the next, what was the growth in those particular, in sales tax? The number in two thousand seventeen is, is basically the city, the rate increase. It was a forty percent increase. We saw about a four million dollar increase in sales tax dollars. So the graph, the, the table below shows you what the dollar figures are. You can see in twenty twenty-one, we were one point seven million dollars higher than we were in twenty twenty. Of course, COVID, so that makes twenty twenty-one look a lot higher. Twenty twenty-two, we were one point three eight million dollars higher than we were in twenty twenty-one, which means with COVID effect, and then, then there was more. We still, this year, we're not seeing as much growth. We're still seeing some growth, but not nearly as we have in the last couple of years, probably because of the effects of COVID. The bottom graph then is use tax, and that's, so sales tax is when you come to Salina and you buy something in Salina and you pay sales tax on it. Use tax is if you order something online, it's delivered in, in Salina, there's a use tax on it. So that's a little bit different whether you are in person buying it here or something else. So as we see that, as people are buying online, the state changed their policy about use tax in general. So your Amazons and those types of people are now having to pay that use tax. We're seeing that number increase. But the dollar numbers are much smaller. So what we're seeing, you know, millions of dollars a month in sales tax. We're seeing hundreds of thousands of dollars a month in use tax. So as those, as we see those percentage increases, the dollar amounts are much different. So I just don't want people to get confused about, oh, we got twenty percent increase in use tax. Well, that might be two hundred thousand dollars.
It's, it's not all internet sales, is it? Isn't it just certain companies that sell certain amounts or something that have to distribute it?
I think the statute says if you sell over two hundred, I think it's two hundred or two hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year, you have to report.
You have to report and then that gets distributed.
Yeah, I think I read that in.
I knew there was some number.
There's, yeah, I think it's two or two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. But they are, they are really buckling down on that from their perspective because they're losing money just like we are. You know, they're losing that sales tax as well. The next graph, which these are kind of hard to read, is by industry, what are those, what are those numbers? For the top one, sales tax, the bottom one is use tax. By far, retail trade is our highest, which makes total sense. Within retail trade, our car dealerships and our actual stores like Walmart, Target, Sam's, those are by far our highest groups of retailers in that number. You can see within those groups, they, they do increase in twenty twenty-one, but the proportion of what they're doing within that number doesn't change a lot. So our middle ground of accommodations hasn't grown more than our retailers. So they're kind of, they kind of all grow on the same pattern. Use tax, you can see significantly change in the retailers. Whereas the others, the accommodations, manufacturing, those are not growing with as much growth rate as retail trade is in the use tax section. Then our next group of, our next, prior highest influx of revenue is from property tax. Property taxes could be complicated and, and it's not always easy to understand. So I'll try to kind of break down how it works so that you have a better understanding of it. But the, one of the most important things to do is it's regulated by state statute. Statute seventy-nine dash twenty-nine eighty-eight, which was adopted effective twenty twenty-one, I believe, created what we call the revenue neutral rate. And basically what it says is that no municipality can collect more property tax for the current year than they did the prior year without notifying your public and your constituents that you're going to do so. So effectively, the process is, is that the county clerk or the county appraiser determines our assessed valuation. And then the county clerk determines, okay, with this new assessed valuation, what would their mill rate be if their property tax revenue did not change? And so she provides that number to us. And then we have to make a decision based on our own needs, whether we want to maintain that revenue neutral rate or not as part of, as part of our budget process. If we do, we just move on. Our budget process stays the same. We submit it. We, we go forward. If we choose that we're not going to stay with that rate, which is, I would say ninety-nine point nine percent of the time, the rate's going to go down because assessed valuation is rarely going to go down. It's always going to go up, so your rate's always going to go down. If we choose not to maintain that revenue neutral rate, then we have, there's extra steps. One, we have to notify the county clerk by July twentieth. There's dates that we're going to do that and what we're going to, what rate we're going to use. She has to send a notice to all taxpayers in the county of every municipality that's going to change their rate. So if we decide to and the school district decides to and the county decides all to go over that rate, they have to send a letter to the, the taxpayers that say, these people are all going over the rate. This is what it's going to be. This is when their public hearing is going to be. We have to tell her that we're going to have a public hearing. We have to give the public the ability to come in and say, and talk their piece, say their piece about our rate. So we have to set the public hearing date. We have to hold a public hearing. And then we, we have to set a, we have to pass a resolution that says basically, we understand our revenue neutral rate was X. We choose to rip, to mill Y, and it's in the resolution. And once we do that, we've made all the notices and we've done the public hearing, then we're free to do that. We can, we can raise that rate over that revenue neutral rate.
So it doesn't really, it doesn't really limit our ability to do anything with property taxes? I mean, in the past, there were, there were legislation that was in place that, you know, depending on how you spent your property taxes, you could only go to a certain level. Well, with, with revenue neutral rate, it really changes it kind of back to the way it was before. You can change the rate as much as you want. You just have to do a little bit of extra notification. So it doesn't say that you can't do it. It just says, you know, we're going to have an extra public hearing and actually spreads out the budgetary timeline a little bit farther or longer than what it had been in the past. So there's nothing that says you can't do it. It's no limit that says you can't. It's just extra process.
They want the taxpayer to know it.
Of course, there's that potential legislation out there that could be.
Yeah, and every year, it seems like there's, there's some sort of tax lid or some legislation where they talk about property. I don't think there's gotten, there's, there hasn't been much that's gotten a lot of traction in this legislative session. But it's, it's a topic.
Well, there was a bill that was just introduced that said that you can't offer any economic incentives if you exceed the revenue neutral rate. Now, that doesn't mean it hasn't gone.
Did it say whether that is just looking forward or is that a look back too?
It's just going forward.
Just going forward, okay. Because it's kind of hard to.
And it's important to understand that you could actually have a reduction in the mill rate, but still exceed the revenue neutral rate because it's all tied back to that assessed valuation. Because the assessed valuation changes every year. And so a revenue neutral rate assumes nothing for inflation. So from year to year, year, as your assessed valuations go up, you have to reduce the mill rate in order to maintain a revenue neutral rate. But there's no accounting for inflation anywhere in that. So that, that's where, it gets very confusing to some people. Even if we reduce the mill rate, we're still exceeding the revenue neutral rate based upon the assessed valuation.
My concept has always been to be able to capture new construction.
New construction only or increase in values, just new construction?
Yeah, and I, I think this past year, Debbie kind of gave us a figure that kind of captured that.
Broke it out.
But it still looked like we raised everyone's taxes. What happens if we lower, go revenue negative?
Nothing. It's just like a normal, we don't have to notify, we don't have to do anything.
It's, it's just less steps in the process. So if we go, we go below the revenue neutral, then it's the same budget process that it was.
Five years ago.
That it's been for the last twenty years. You just, you have to go through a public hearing and it's approved in, in August rather than in September.
But to remain revenue neutral, and, and based on inflation, you know, cost, I mean, what is seventy percent of our expenses employees? So, you know, obviously, you're, if you keep the same amount of employees, you're always going to have an increase in expenses despite other inflationary deals. Is, your, your sales tax would have to increase, basically, by so much.
Yeah, and that's the thing about property taxes, is it's the only one where we really know we're going to get it. I mean, and we know most, I mean, we have a very low percentage of people that don't pay their property taxes. So, when we say, we need thirteen million dollars, we're generally going to get pretty close to thirteen million dollars.
And granted, increase in sales tax helps alleviate some of the, the pressure on your property tax, but it's usually not enough to offset an increase.
And it's very unknown.
Yeah.
It's very, yeah, yeah.
But for Commissioner Ivey's benefit, we, we lowered the mill levy this last year, but all the increases we get blamed for. The county and everyone else went up, the school board went up significantly, we get the blame.
And that's common everywhere.
Yeah, it is. It's very common.
I was a, I was the city administrator in Oakley, and we had, we were actually in three counties. So, we had a street that was in Thomas County, and most of the city was in, in Logan County, and I had people that lived across the street that would come into my office and just go, go crazy, because they, they paid for a community college that was in Colby. They were the only ones in town that did, just that one half of the street, but, I mean, I didn't have anything to do with it. They still saw that it was a property tax bill, and, you know, so, it, that's just part of the game. I mean, your, people expect that it's the city, no matter, no matter what. And I, I mean, our, I don't know if we have a chart in here that shows what percentage of the overall property taxes.
We do.
That go to the city, but it's.
Yeah, it's coming up.
It's not the majority, for certain.
So, a, a, on the next slide, a couple of other things that affect our property tax collection would be some of those incentives, so the tax increment, incremental financing. So, that value comes off of our assessed valuation, that's part of the, the value of the property that we don't get. Rural housing incentives, if we'd give exemptions for IRBs, neighborhood revitalization program, those rebates, that, that all affects the amount of property tax that we, not that we levied, but that we end up collecting. And if we would have any, any cash incentives, we've had some in the past with sales tax, where we're given incentive for a specific, like, I think we give to Save-A-Lot or something like that, a percentage of, a rebate type thing. So, anytime we give her an incentive of property tax, it affects what we collect, not necessarily what we levy. So, the next slide kind of gives you the breakdown of property tax. How's it collected? How, what, what it, what variables are affected? So, our collection is affected by the assessed valuation and the mill rate. Those are the only two things that affect it. It's a, it's a pure calculation of assessed valuation and mill rate. As you can see in the, in the first graph, our, our collections have gone up, not significantly, but they are steadily growing. In the second graph, you can see the valuations have changed significantly. On average, they, over the last ten years, it's about one point nine percent increase in assessed valuations, average per year. You can see there was a huge number in two thousand twenty-three, I think that was like ten percent, nine something, and, but there's some years that there's very little, but that, that's an anomaly. We know the sales ta- the house prices were what they were doing in two thousand twenty-two and two thousand twenty-three, so that's affected by that. Assessed valuation not only includes your house, it includes personal property, which, as you may or may not recall, back in two thousand seven, the legislature took the ability, took, exempted any new personal property that a bu- a business bought after two thousand seven, was no longer taxable through personal property. So, everything that existed at that point is still taxable, but any new purchase of equipment is no longer taxable for a corporation. So, in, since two thousand and seven, the cities lost thirty-two point seven million dollars in assessed valuation, which is about a million dollars a year in taxes from that exemption alone. So, you, so as this, this bar graph on the bottom shows, the assessed valuation, the majority of that is obviously real estate. There is some state assessed in there, which is like your railroads and things that cross multiple counties. The estate will go in and assess those values by county as opposed to having a local assessor do that. Oil and gas, we don't have very many, but if you have oil and gas, pumps and things like that, those are assessed as well. But by far, the most of ours is real estate. I did add TIF on here, because that TIF-based valuation does affect our property tax, because that, as that increment goes up, it's included in our total valuation, so when somebody says, the city's total valuation is five hundred and fifty million dollars, if ten million dollars of that is that TIF increment, that comes off the top before we get our property tax, because that's our incentive that we're giving that TIF district.
The, the other thing is, and I'm not sure all commissioners are aware, but commercial real estate's assessed at a higher value than.
That's true.
Than residential.
That's true. Residential's eleven and a half percent on appraised value.
Right.
Commercial is twenty-five percent of appraised value to, to get to your assessed value. So, if your building's worth a million dollars, twenty-five percent of that is what you're assessed on, and that's the value you're taxed on. Whereas if you have a million-dollar home, eleven and a half percent of that are a hundred and fifteen dollars or whatever.
So, that's why sometimes you'll hear, commercial real estate, I'm not looking at you, Greg, but you'll, you'll hear mainly, you know, like in the downtown area, you know, people are reviewing properties and values are going up, and they're being assessed at a, that higher value, and it, it increases the amount of ta- property tax they pay significantly.
That's right.
What about agriculture?
Agriculture is assessed at a very low amount. I can't remember what it is. It's very low.
Yeah, very, I.
Yeah, it's like one percent.
I was going to say one percent.
It's agricultural.
There's not a lot, but there are some places, I mean, I think that the way that they look at that, if there's an empty lot.
Did we, did we annex Beck's End, or were they already in city limits? But that was, you know, there, that was just being assessed at, at a, you know, you look at, you know, at what we gave away, I say gave away, and the fact that we didn't give anything away, we still collected that rate that was agricultural, and it amounted to hundreds of dollars.
Hundreds of dollars, and it's very, very low.
It's very low.
Versus what we're going to get in, in ten years when that goes on at a, you know, what, twenty million dollars is right now what they have, they're investing, is that correct?
Yeah, it's around there.
So, yeah.
Yeah. So, then on the next slide, we talk about what Jacob talked about. The dollars, the dollar sign shows you, this is a couple of years old, but the dollar sign pretty much tells you that about twenty-two percent of the total property tax collected is city of Salina dollars. Forty percent of it is the USD three oh five, twenty-nine percent is Celine County, and then the other ten percent is just miscellaneous municipalities within the state, within the city. The total mill rate, if you, that's kind of just a visual of the total mill rate, the city of Salina is the bottom orange, and you can see it doesn't fluctuate a lot, none of them really do. On the right-hand side, that's the difference between the, the city's general fund property tax mill rate, which is about seventy-five percent of our total, and then the debt service fund mill rate, which is about twenty-five percent of our total. So, you can see, we did go down in the two thousand twenty-four budget, this is budget year. So, another thing that gets a little confusing is tax years and budget years, because if you think about it, what we, what was assessed in two thousand twenty, November of two thousand twenty-three, and you paid your taxes for in December of two thousand twenty-three? Where's your two thousand twenty-three taxes? But the city doesn't collect that until two thousand twenty-four, so it's our budget year of two thousand twenty-four. So, we're really collecting the taxes that were assessed last year in this budget year. So, that can get a little confusing to some people too, but you've got to remember we're a year behind in that. The next highest growth factor that we, and probably the next revenue cycle or stream is franchise fees, and this is agreements that we have with energy company, Kansas Gas, Evergy, those types of things, that they're paying us as, between five and six percent, I can't remember if we have any five percent, so I think most of them are six percent, of their net revenues as a franchise fee in order to use our right-of-way and things like that for their lines and, and such. And so, you can see by far, the highest collection of the is through electrical, the next is gas. We do charge our wastewater and water fund for that, we just, there's pretty straight level. The variables here are weather, weather and usage. So, this is difficult to track and trend, because we never know, you know, if we have a really hot summer, that electric one's going to go sky-high. If we have a really cool, you know, a lot of rain, that type of thing, that number could go down. You can see it's pretty consistent, but there are some bubbles in there, so it's, it's not always easy to figure out. I would say the gas one is probably a rate, there was, was probably some rates increases in there, between twenty-one and twenty-three, it's hard to know. That's the other variable in there, is what do they do with their rates, because it is all based on their revenue. The average annual growth in revenue itself is about three point four seven percent over this period of time, so. And I'm giving you these percentages, because we're going to look at these in a little bit to try to figure out what we're going to do in the future. Just in perspective, of those, of all of those franchisees, gas, the average growth has been about thirteen percent, which equates to about a million dollars. If you look at cable, it's down three percent, that's their average is a negative three percent, but it only equates to about five hundred thousand dollars a year. That's their average collection per year is about five hundred thousand. So, the numbers are so wide, you get into the, the gas and electric, they're up in the millions of dollars, and the, the rest of them are pretty small, dollar-wise.
The telephone is the one that's really trending hard down.
Right.
Is that landlines, telephones?
Um, I, yes, because I would say wireless is taking over the, that functionality. That is AT&amp;T and Southwestern Bell are the ones we have franchisees with for that one.
There's lots of nuances to franchises.
Yes, there are.
Based on the kind of company that they are, and, and, and the kind of services they provide. So, like, AT&amp;T is a telephone company, they started as a telephone company, so they pay a telephone rate, but they may come in with new service that's fiber service, and that fiber service is charged at a different way than, than some of the others. So, as you see, all these fiber companies that came in, they don't have franchises. So, I mean, how many, we have Clearwave, we have Nextech. Nextech has a franchise, but it's a franchise for a different part of their business. So, it's a switching telephone service that they have for businesses. So, like, if you had Nextech, like, Nextech Telephone, even though it's voice-over IP at City Hall, all of our phones are through Nextech, those are going to pay franchise fees to that telephone franchise. But if you get cable at your house through Nextech, or you get, you get fiber at your house through Nextech, you get your internet that way, you're not going to pay the same franchise fee. So, I think we're going to see a little bit of change in some of how, how that works over the next couple of years, as those, as those folks roll out their fiber service. I don't, it's not dramatic, I mean, it's not a huge part of our franchise fees anyway, so I don't, I don't know that we'll, you know, see a huge impact, but, but it will be a change.
But if you get the fiber service from AT&amp;T, they'll be taxed the franchise fee.
It just depends, and it's, it's very confusing, because it really depends on how they started their business and their business model.
How they're registered at the state.
How they're registered with the state, whether they're a telecom company, whether they're a video service provider, whether they are, you know, it's, it's, it's very, it's very nuanced in that regard.
And it's new. Got the new phone book last week or so.
Not that.
Yeah, and, and with, with franchises.
I took a, I used to get the phone book, and I'd always look to see if my name was in there. Not a common name.
Yeah, and with franchises, it's, we don't have a whole lot of control over, over a lot of this. We set the rate at whatever percentage we're allowed to do by the state, and the state really regulates it. State and federal really regulate that. So, all of our franchises are at the same rate, at six percent, we set that. I think the last one to go there was video services, and that was probably two, two years ago. Those are long-term agreements, we, we generally sign a fifteen or a twenty-year agreement when we do those. We just redid Evergy's in the last year, and that, that's a twenty-year agreement. So, it's kind of one of those things, you just set it and, and, and see what happens. But I, I do, I, I don't anticipate we're going to see growth in the telecom, video service provider, that sort of thing. But as we expand and we have new electrical service that comes online, we should see some of those go up, and, and as Debbie said, weather, weather-dependent, you know, if it's cold in the winter, gas is going to be higher. If it's hot in the summer, electric's going to be higher. So, there's some offset, and it's, it's pretty consistent over time.
And, and you, it's consistent, one thing is consistent franchises, you've seen throughout the nation, is a decline in the cable. As people are going more towards the fiber and cutting the cord to the cable, you see that pretty consistence, consistently. Now, there may be some small aberrations, and really, when you look at the numbers, it's more than offset by the fluctuations in gas and electric, because those two are the six-hundred-pound gorillas in this category.
Yeah, I, I'm actually a little bit surprised that we haven't seen cable fall off faster than has. I mean, it's been a pretty slow, it's de- it's declined year over year, but it's been a pretty slow decline, even though there's so much more opportunity to do, you know, streaming services or stuff that you don't have to pay a franchise.
The price people pay for their cable service, that used to be a house payment.
Yeah, yeah. And we, we will see electric, our electric utility should, with Evergy's rates, those changing, we will see an increase, I think. I don't know how big it'll be, but we will see an increase there going forward.
So, as they raise their rates, the franchise fee goes with it.
Yeah, because it's based on the revenue, their net revenue, yeah, yeah. So, fees and, fees and weather, that's all we got. And Martha doesn't want us to hope for hot wet, hot summers, because then it causes her trouble, or cold winters, because then her pipes break, so. So, the next group, I just, just for informational purpose only, we do inter-fund transfers from our enterprise funds, and, and from sales tax capital funds, and these are really, in order to have our enterprise funds support some of the overhead of the city processes. So, the enterprise funds pay, pay transfer fees for pilot, payment in lieu of taxes, because they don't, none of those pay property taxes. They pay for overhead, they pay for risk management, computer technology, and, and franchise fees. We do have one transfer from the sales tax capital fund that, into the general fund that is for tax stabilization, and we'll talk about that here in a bit, about why that is and where that kind of came from. I will say that tax stabilization component is a, is currently a million dollars, and if you think about it, that's about two mills that's going into the general fund that we don't have to add to property tax, because that's supplementing that funding. So, it's about two mills at this point. The next revenue gr- revenue sector that I wanted to look at was EMS, and you can see, they're, they're fairly flat, but they have done some increases. We have had some rate increases recently, and vo- two variables here are volume, call volume and rates. So, as, as our rates go up through Medicare and insurance providers, and our call volume goes up, we'll see that, that those numbers will go up.
Yeah, and we are limited there as far as rate increases. We can't increase it to what we want it to be, and it really has to follow whatever Medicare or Medicaid will pay.
Yeah, and typically, all the other insurance companies will fall in line with Medicare and Medicaid, so we try to make sure that we're at least at their rates, to make sure that we're collecting the maximum amount we can. The next slide I find kind of interesting, it shows you kind of by source where this, these fees are coming from. We do have an agreement with the county, because we took over the, the ambulance service or the EMS service from the county. We have an inter-local agreement with them, that they provide us with any operating costs over what we collect, and that's kind of, it's been a calculation, it, it's about seven hundred ninety-five thousand dollars a year, plus they pay for the cost of any ambulances that we replace, which we are now doing one, if we ever had to do an additional one, they would reimburse us for that cost. That's that, the, the larger of the, the lighter of the two blue ones on the left-hand side. You'll see the next blue one, which is the next largest one, is Medicare. That's, that's by far our, our biggest provider of, of EMS services. And then it breaks it down into, you know, like, individual insurance, Medicaid, things like that. We do provide, one number that's included in here is fire protection for outside the city, so there's, there are some entities that are outside the city limits that are charged an annual fee for fire protection, so that fee's in here as well. It's not a lot, maybe a hundred thousand dollars a year total, but this kind of just breaks down, I, it's kind of interesting to see how much Medicaid, or Medicare actually does pay for that service here in Salina. The next category is motor vehicle tax. Motor vehicle tax is even more complicated than property tax, because it's based on a, on a market value, so we're set, we, we are assigned the market valuation of our vehicles, and we can track that, we know what that number is, it's assigned by the county or the state, and it goes down to the individual car. But what, what gets a little confusing is how do they charge that? It's actually based on, so the rate, the property tax that you're paying in twenty twenty-four is based on the, the average county mill rate from two years ago. So in twenty twenty-four, they look back at twenty twenty-two and they average out all of the rates for every city in the, in the county of Celine, in Celine County. And they come up with an average of that rate. And that's the amount, that's the mill levy that's applied to your vehicle. Um, so in twenty twenty-four, we're based on a twenty twenty-two year, our average county rate is one oh four seven fifty-seven. So that's the mill rate you're paying on the value of your car in twenty twenty-four. Um, nobody would ever understand that except for people that have dealt with that. I was in the mo- motor vehicle world for a while, so I had to learn that. Um, motor vehicle tax collection values have been going up. Um, as you can see with the first li- line, mill levies fluctuate based on whatever we do as a municipality that affects our motor ve- or motor vehicle collections two years from now. So if we go down in two years, our rate's going down. Or if, you know, somebody else goes up, it, yeah, it's, it's kind of hard to keep track of, but, um, the, the collection is fairly stable though. I mean, it's gone up signi- I mean, it's, it goes up a, a small amount every year. So you can see that we started out in, two years ago or three years ago at a million dollars, we're at about a million three now, so. So that's kind of the major, um, revenue sectors of the general fund. Of course, there's others, but we're not gonna look at all of those. Um, we have municipal court and some of those things. So the next thing I wanted to cover is give you an understanding of the expense side of, um, this. And if we need to take a break, you guys just tell me you wanna take a break. Let's take a break. So we talked about revenues, we're gonna talk about expenses, and I'll fly through most of these slides, cause they tell the story. So about seventy, or about seventy percent of our expenses are personnel-related. Um, that equates to, in the general fund, we're talking general fund, that equates to about thirty million dollars a year out of our forty-two million dollar budget or fifty-two million dollar budget. Of that, of that expenditure, fifty-one percent of that is for public safety. So you can see a majority of our, our general fund dollars are for public safety purposes. The next dozen slides or so, half dozen slides, look at just those expenses, what they are, what their trends have been. Um, what, uh, revenues versus expenses look like. The, this slide just kind of shows you that personnel number and how that, how that's so much larger than any of the other numbers. The next slide, um, the story we try, we're trying to portray is, up until the last three years, our revenue and expenses have been about the same. We haven't had a, a big fluctuation. This one's without transfers, so that about five and a half million dollars that we get transferred in makes a big difference to the general fund. Um, the next slide on forty-eight is revenues versus expenditures history. You can see the blue, which is the revenue, um, has started to expand a little bit, um, in the past few years. Um, over with that expense, that transfer of expenses or, or increase in revenue that we've been seeing over the past few years. Um, the next slide, again, revenues versus expenditures, just showing the types and how the, the growth there, twenty twenty, with personnel was of course due to work share. And then kind of like the trend lines, they're, they're going up, but not significantly at a time. Um, the, the slide on slide fifty, I wanted to just to show you of those four major, um, influences of revenues over the past few years, kind of what those look like as far as average growth. You can see, um, sales tax, property tax and franchise fees. Their average growth is about three percent, um, annually, um, over the past ten years. Um, interest income is way out of the ballpark because of the interest rates, but we were collecting anywhere, you know, a couple hundred thousand dollars. We're up to about two and a half million dollars in revenue. Um, so this all prefaces the exercise on page, on slide fifty-one, which, um, as Mike likes to challenge everyone every now and then, his challenge to me was, put these assumptions in there and then tell me what it's gonna take sales tax to do to support these assumptions. So on slide fifty-one, the assumptions we have are, if property tax stays stable, if we stay at a revenue neutral rate, we don't do anything ever again. If franchise fees go up, they're average of three percent. That's only about a hundred and ninety thousand dollars growth. EMS goes up three percent, that's about thirty-five, ninety-five thousand. And interest rate stays the same because we won't anticipate the five percent is gonna go any higher than that for interest rates. Um, licenses and permits go up about six percent, it's about forty thousand dollars. That's the revenue side. On the expense side, if we stay, everything's gonna go up five percent. That equates to about two million dollars a year on personnel, hundred fifty thousand on contr- on commodities, five hundred thousand on contractual services and about ninety thousand dollars on, um, capital. That's a difference of two point two million dollars in expenses, three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars in revenue, without property tax and sales tax. So the next graph is where I show, where I show, okay, what's gonna have to happen. So what I did was I took expenses and I revenue, total revenue and expenses, the red and the blue line. And in order to get those equal, I had to make sales tax increase by nine percent a year for the next five years. And I'd only looked at the next five years. So, and that, but that now, I would preface this by saying, I was just thinking about this. This only makes them balance. This doesn't use any fund balance. So as that number goes different, so if we, if sales tax comes in at half of that, and so we are down a couple million, then we're using our fund. I should have put fund balance on this graph, but in hindsight, I should have put that on there. But that just goes to show you is, is without that additional property tax and things, we could be level and we, with nine percent increase in, in sales tax, which is unreasonable in my opinion, but, um, but this doesn't take into consideration that, like I said, that fund balance usage, which at this point we have about roughly thirty million dollars. Our target's ten million dollars. So we have some, we have some decisions to make, basically. Um, so that brings us to the next slide. Yes, during our upcoming strategic planning and budget, um, considerations, we're gonna have to, we're gonna have to answer some questions. It's, it's, what assumptions are we comfortable with to determine what our expense bill should be? It's five percent a good number, it's three percent a good number, you know? We know what inflation's doing. We know kind of what we want our employees to be able to, um, get the benefit of. What revenue assumptions are we comfortable making? That's a tough one, because as Jacob said, we only control one of them. You know, we don't control franchise fees, we don't control sales tax. And then the third one is, do we wanna, um, spend down our reserve? And how do we wanna do that? Because as we spoke earlier, there's two different kinds of expenses, those one-time ones that take a chunk out and forever gone, and those kind of adjustments that we're gonna be eating for the rest of their lives, basically. Um, because you can't take them back once you give them, a lot of times. I mean, you can, but it's, it's a lot, a lot more difficult to do that. So those are just kind of some food for thought as we go into strategic planning on how we're, what we're gonna do. Um, if, when you see those numbers and how the, the trends are coming in. Um, the next couple of slides, I won't even go through, because we, we go through these on budget, are outside commitments. Um, we know we have SCDO, we have SDI, um, chamber. We do provide support for Salina Grace Tennis, Salina Art Center, uh, community theater. I just wanted to provide those kind of dollars, um, for informational purposes. Um, it's not a huge chunk out of the change, but it, it is just some of those commitments that we have. Um, the next fund we'll look at is the sales tax capital fund, cause this by far probably the, supports the most, um, progress or projects in our, in our world. Um, roughly review, back in two thousand sixteen, we put out a public, um, request for additional sales tax, and we made some commitments and promises in that. Um, and these next few slides kind of overview what those were. And we try, we try and diligently make sure that we're meeting these expectations when we make budget decisions and we make recommendations. We try to make sure that we're looking at this and saying, okay, does this meet what we, we made a promise to be, to do back, back in two thousand sixteen? Um, so currently, so those, um, and the next slide shows kind of what those commitments are annually. So we have prior debt that we've made a commitment. We have, um, Funding to the River Renewal Project, which is a replacement for Kenwood Cove. We have Park Maintenance Fund, Kenwood Cove, capital equipment, capital planning, buildings, facilities and streets funding. And all of those come out of here. Um, you see the ending date of twenty thirty-six. That's because the special sales tax sunsets on twenty thirty-six. So at that time, um, commission will have to make a decision whether they go back out and request that again. Takes a vote of, of, of the citizen to do that. Um, so, you know, we, we kind of just go towards twenty thirty-six. We don't try to plan beyond that because we don't know that it's gonna be there. Um, one of the major, uh, factors in this, uh, request in twenty sixteen was the Promise of the River Renewal Project. That's why I have Martha here, in case you have questions. Um, the funding of that was basically, uh, we were gonna take, our promise was to take any funding that we were currently using for, for Kenwood Cove, which was about one point three million dollars a year. And we were gonna apply that to the river project through the end of the sales tax period. And so that slide on fifty-nine, um, just tells you how that, those numbers shake out. We have, we have financed some things for the River Renewal Project, some of the design. Um, we anticipate, um, construction, about twelve million dollars of construction within these confines of these numbers. Um, we do know that that project has morphed into much more than what we promised in twenty sixteen. Um, with the RACE grant, with the, um, cores, all the core projects that we're looking at. Uh, even the core, when we originally did this project, it was expected to be a twenty-seven million dollar project. The state core would take ten million dollars of that and the city would do seventeen million dollars of that. Um, but if you've listened to Martha in the last few years, that number has gone back and forth and delayed and everything else. Um, so I wanna give you a chance to ask Martha any questions you have about this project, um, so that she can give you kind of an update of where that is. Um, with the RACE grant, of course, now it's a twenty-seven million dollar project here and a thirty-six million dollar project here because of the RACE grant. And so it's kind of, and the timeline is always questionable, so. I'll give Martha that opportunity to give her three-minute spiel and answer any questions you have.
And basically what Debbie mentioned, the project has really grown greatly since we first conceded it back with the vote in twenty sixteen, started the project. I'll try to give just kind of the, the real high al- high look at it. And so in general, the RACE grant is roughly, well, it's thirty-six point seven million dollar project. And out of that, um, the city is in for about, you know, twelve, thirteen, fourteen million, depending upon how some pieces work out. And the funding that we know for sure from the US Department of Transportation is a little over twenty-two million out of that. Thirty-six million. So the rest of it is made up between the city and some dollars from Friends of the River. So call it thirty-seven million if you want to. And then you go over and look at the core project and it's roughly estimated to be a little over, we'll call it twenty-one point five million. So we went from twenty-seven million dollar project to the upper fifty million dollar project. So we've, for lack of better terms, really doubled what we're gonna do. In the project for the RACE grant, we'll have, uh, seven new bridges. And that tallies up at about eleven and a half million dollars out of that thirty-six point seven million. So a good share is bridges. There's five million for trails, five million for the fourth street, um, area there by Fourth Street and Iron. And then there's trails, boat launches, actually fixing the retaining wall with the water treatment plant along the river. And some miscellaneous, uh, safety lights and so on. So none of those things were considered when we started the project. We were thinking, get the water flowing was really what we were doing. So we went from get the water flowing to something with, uh, all of these amenities. Originally, we would not have been able to canoe or kayak in the river channel without the bridges. So the activities that we can do has improved a lot. Most recently, I've been working on the agreement. And, uh, in the schedule, it said that might take mu- nine months. They weren't kidding. It's quite an experience. Uh, we've got, um, the actual base agreement is been, is at headquarters in Washington DC. And they've agreed to what's in it. Our last comments was needed to add the word five and a comma. So now the financial person is looking at all of that. So our hope is that we'll get the approval from them and the document ready to go. My best guess is if we could have that to the city commission in March with our two-week intervals now. And, um, then as soon as we can get that document signed and agreed to with the US Department of Transportation, we can move on to the agreement with our consulting engineer. A lot of our, I'll say, conversation with the highway gro- group has been, did we hire HDR appropriately back in twenty seventeen and follow all of the rules that are in the twenty twenty-two RACE grant? And for the most part, by luck or by good policy, we met nearly everything they have in there, at least the intent of it. So we think we've crossed that hurdle and we're able to continue on with HDR, because they've done a thirty percent plans. If we had to start over with the new consulting firm, there'd be a lot of re-education to get them up to where we are. So we think we've got over that hurdle. So I expect to bring you some agreements in, uh, March and April, one for the US Department of Transportation and the other for HDR.
And that'll just be for the bridges?
The whole thing.
The whole thing.
The entire project.
Cause last update I heard, uh, RACE grant was reviewing design and stuff in Washington and-
They're, they're reviewing the design agreement for the entire project.
They don't care what kind of bridge we build, it's just-
No, they really don't. As long as we spend the amount of money we said we would and-
There is a, there are two projects though. So there is the seven bridges and then the, the kind of recreational stuff. And then there's the get the water moving, which is a core project. So, so what, what Martha's talking about right now is the seven bridges and the recreational stuff.
Yeah, everything but the core.
The core is a totally separate process and project and timeline.
So where are we at with the core?
Twenty-one million dollars. The, on the RACE, I'm gonna finish that quick schedule, then I'll talk core, so hopefully they'll marry together. Um, the design, we hope to be off on that in April, May of this year, has to be complete by April of twenty twenty-six. And then move into bid letting, start construction. Um, construction completion is November first of twenty thirty. And then we have to have all of our dollars in place, but I can see Mike's going wow, um, June thirtieth of twenty thirty-one. So all of our paper in for the funding, because by September thirtieth of twenty thirty-one, our money evaporates and we can't get any more of it. So our goal is to have it all spent by June thirtieth of twenty thirty-one. So that schedule's out there a ways, as you, as you probably hear from that. The core, um, HDR and I have a call every month with them to find out how are they doing on funding? Do they think things are in play? And, oh, things are good, no problems. They, they think they're still in the schedule. But they haven't officially got the funding to do the feasibility study. For those of you that's been involved for a while, we switched from the cap program, which was the continuum authority. It had a ten million dollar cap. Well, our project at twenty-one million greatly outgrew that. So if we had to pay more than the core, then it really wouldn't be a core project. So we switched to, uh, their general investigation program, which doesn't have a maximum limit or a cutoff of, like the cap did at ten million. And we share there at, uh, sixty-five, thirty-five. So actually that program is, uh, actually is less dollars for us than if we'd stayed in the cap and paid half of twenty-one million. But the schedule on that project, um, we stretched it out just because we knew things might no, not go as quickly. But since all of our talk, discussion has been to complete the new feasibility study in, in twenty twenty-four through twenty twenty-six and to have the design and construction done by twenty thirty. So again, you're starting to hear end dates between the RACE grant and the, uh, US Army Corps of Engineer project that are in that twenty thirty comp year date. So we still think everything works together and they feel confident they're gonna get the funding. Um, Jerry Moran, Senator Moran asked for a ear, a small earmark to help us get the feasibility study done. But we haven't heard whether that panned out or not. So they, they pursue it on a regular basis. But we have a year or so of leeway there before we have to start the feasibility study. We think it's about a year-long project. But we just gave some timeframe, because funding's a little more difficult to get through the core and those projects. So that's kind of the, the rough schedule of the two projects coming together. I'm, I'm giving a lot of thought to, uh, our original engineering fee in our application was a twen- it was a twenty twenty-two application. So those numbers are two years old. And I recently have been getting a lot of new fee data sheets from the consultants and their fees are- and their fees are taking a little bit of a hike these last year and two because of just the idea of hiring the labor and the going price to get everybody to do all the work that's out there. So I'm concerned about engineering fees and I'll always be concerned about construction until we have something designed and a hard number for it because that's been quite a moving target for those of you that lived through the wastewater plant. We went from 31.5 to 41.5 over the course of it in materials and labor and, and just however long it takes to get the product. So more to learn as we start to look at some new estimates and dollars and get through the, first step is to get the agreement signed with the U.S. Department of Transportation, then we can actually start working with the agreement for HDR. So we'll get a better idea of what their engineering fees are. We, as a city, have to do an independent cost estimate of all the fees in construction as a part of the grant program. So we're supposed to be cross-checking and ensuring that the fees are fair. This is a project that might be a little larger and more complex than most projects we've done, so we'll have to do our best with looking at a lot smaller projects and trying to reflect it into something like this on cost, but that is a task we're responsible for. That is the, I don't know, 10-mile-over, fly-in, look-down, kind of the quick and dirty story. Do you have any other questions or...
10 miles up, if I look down, are the railroad tracks still on Fourth Street?
I am not the railroad tracks person, but if I could make them go away, I would love to. In fact, we're assuming they're going to be there for a while, and we slid the River Channel over a little bit to give us some additional room for the, the future that we're looking there for, that area. So no, railroad tracks are, are not a friend in any project.
I will say Mike has this on scope to do a study session later this year so that she can give you a bigger, more in-depth kind of overview of where things are and what it involves.
Like to have, like to have the agreement with the U.S. Department of Transportation is scheduled down because all of those things will have effect in how we look at budget dollars because the shorter the design period, I'm sure the next thing the consultants will say, we're going to have to pay additional hours outside the normal work hours to get work done and different things, some, so we haven't talked, that's not come to play yet. In the application, the number was a little over 4 million for the engineering.
So you think we should see that agreement with DOT in next month or April?
I'm hoping that we get squared away this month, but I'm too optimistic now that it's like the 20th, yeah. So yes, next month from them, I, I believe. We, we think we're real close. Now that the agreement words are all matched up and they're good with that, it's just down to the finance person reviewing our budget numbers, and we've done a round or two with them. They're evidently, if you're going to give someone 22 million dollars, you really scrutinize it because they are very detailed at the work they do to make sure. We're spending the money they give us as we said we would. And probably one last comment, the catch with that grant application and why I'm so concerned about the dollars down the road is, once you sign that, that, that agreement, you're, you're going to build this project. And if for some reason, Debbie says I can't have any gold doorknobs, but I have to really think about what, how it goes together for a project. If it would come in over the, the dollars that were presented, the 36 million or over that, then all of those dollars, additional dollars would be city costs. And so that's why I'm keep anxiously talking about dollars and budget and, that's always a concern. And I don't know if we have a good enough crystal ball to look into the future and know how or what's going to change. We've seen some availability of equipment and materials get better, but not a lot on the dollar side. They're delivering better, but I don't know. Some projects seem to bid really well and other projects seem to be much higher. I'm not sure how they all come together, but this one requires a lot of labor and a lot of outside materials, so we'll be trying to look into those costs and be able, I want to be able to share those numbers with you around the same time we give you the U.S. Department of Transportation agreement because if it's, if I think it's going to be 5 million dollars more, I want to tell you then. I don't want to tell you a year and a half down the road that, oh, by the way, we need additional dollars. I need to, I've done some estimating and I've started looking into that, trying to decide, but it's, I can't say it's an easy task to try to look at what's something going to be worth in 2026. Trying to give that a hard look, so, so you're not, but at least got to tell you upfront everything you need to know. And if, and I've talked to Debbie a little about, what if it is 5 million dollars more? What does that mean? So we'll be able to give you an idea of how that might be funded. I was just talking about some extra dollars earlier, Debbie, so I just put my name in the hat.
Yeah. Martha wants that one-time spending.
One time, well, it would be one time.
Yeah.
Is there any other questions or...
We'll wait for that study session.
Wait for that study session. Well, I think that when I talk about the study session, that's the one to talk about, is the cost going to be more? And here's what the agreement, kind of bringing everybody up to date before we sign the agreement with the U.S. Department of Transportation.
Okay, thank you, Martha.
Waste water for a little bit.
So I'm going to quickly go through sales tax capital fund. We go over this multiple times and we'll go over it again. The support that we're giving in the current model that we have for the 2024 schedule, including the fire department apparatus that we just approved, we're modeling at a 1.25% interest or increase, which hopefully will be able to sustain since that, that average is about 5% at this moment. So we'll hopefully be able to sustain that to meet all those commitments. We do have discretionary and financial commitments in there, so we do have some leeway to adjust some of the discretionary commitments that we might have in those sales tax accounts. The next thing I want to talk about is debt financing. I'll go through this pretty quickly. We are rated by Moody's. There's three different rating agencies. We, we use Moody's. We have a, a team that helps us. We have Gilmore and Bell and Stiefel who are advisors. Our most current rating was an AA3, which is the lowest at the high grade, which is great. We tend to hear the same things over and over again during our ratings. If our debt goes down, we might get a better rating. If, you know, if our economics go up, you know, it's, you never know with them what it's going to be because they do change regularly on what they, what they're looking for and, and kind of where their comfort level is as far as ratings go. So for us to be in an AA3, which is in that highest grade, it is pretty good as long as we can maintain that. Not going to go over that. One of the things we talk, we try to look at, I'm going to jump to slide 69, Jacob, is where, where do we, how do we pay for our debt? That first slide is from the utility department. That's the funding that, that's for their Kansas Relevating Loans, their GEO bond loans, the revenue bonds. That's their schedule of annual payments. The one at the bottom shows us property tax, special assessments and sales tax, and you can see as those drop down. We do have some other sources that kind of help pay for property tax, which are the motor vehicle tax, the delinquent property tax, and some portion of the transient guest tax, which is currently paying for some of the TPEC funding. The next slide shows kind of what we're looking into our plan for the next five years or so, what those projects look like. We talked about these at budget, so I don't really feel the need that we need to repeat them. But the second table over there on the right kind of shows us what's available out of our current mill levy. We currently levy about 3.8 million dollars in property tax for debt service. So the, the third column in that table shows you what would be available for debt service, and at about $75,000 per million, what that equates to in the, the principal of the debt. So that kind of gives you an idea of where that number falls. The one consideration we'll have to make at some point is the river, what Martha was just talking about, if there's any additional river renewal funding that needs to be done. The rest, this is bond stuff, just shows you kind of the projects on the next schedule, kind of where historically, how much is property tax issued. I would say it only goes to 2021. 2022, we only had, 2023, we didn't issue any debt for property tax. The only debt we did was for special assessments and transient guest tax. We talk about the debt limit a lot on, on slide 72. This is based on our assessed valuation, and just for an explanation, you're, you're maximized for your debt at 30% of your assessed valuation. It's kind of like when you get a house loan, what should your percentage of payment be? So it's based on 30% of your assessed valuation. That current number for us, this was a 2021 number, but the 2022 number was 100, a little over 167 million dollars. We currently hold about 59 million dollars of debt that's applicable to that because things like utility debt, special assessments, those things are not applicable because they are paid by something other than property tax. So currently, we have about 30, used about 35% of our limit. And so when you get those numbers in blue sheets from special assessments, you can kind of have a better idea of that, what that means. That means we've utilized about 35% of what the total amount we would be allowed by state statute. Reserve funds, we have several reserve funds set aside. The water, utility water one has about 10 million dollars in that. That was intentional. We'd been putting aside money for this water, wastewater plant upgrade. The equipment is not included in that project, so that's estimated about 7 million dollars that we anticipate coming out of that water reserve 10 million dollar fund. A couple of years ago, we set up reserve funds, I kind of mentioned this earlier, for those products, for those allocations out of sales tax capital so that they could keep their money that was allocated to them. So the next slide kind of shows you where those balances are. The building and facilities fund had about 7, about 900,000 dollars in it after, at the end of 2023. Parks had about a million dollars. Streets had about a million five, and the fleet replacement, which is our enterprise, had about 750,000 dollars. So as we go through these, and we go through our capital, 10-year capital planning, we'll look at these numbers and that gives them some ability to, maybe we don't allocate as much as we would need to next year because we have a little bit of fund balance or something comes up that we didn't anticipate through building some facilities. You know, if somebody would have a flood or something like that, we'd never anticipate that, but that fund balance kind of gives us that, a little bit of that cushion, and it's non-budgeted that we would be able to fix that out of that funding, and that's set aside specifically for that. The capital improvement plan, we talked about this, we've talked about it a lot this year because we did that, we did that 10-year planning period. We do still adopt our five-year plan, but we do also have the 10-year plan out there that we're going to continue to tweak and, and kind of as people are getting used to it. I think they'll be taking it a lot more seriously and say, oh, I forgot to put that on, I need to put that on. So we're, we're continuing to work through that as we go through the budget cycle to make sure that, one, when somebody comes to me and says, hey, I need to buy this, I say, was it on your plan? That's the first question I ask them. And if it wasn't, I ask them why, and then I tell them, well, if it wasn't, we're going to have to talk about it a little bit more because that's the purpose of plan. We need to know what you need. And I think, so I think they're getting that better. And this is only the second year, so I'm sure we'll have some tweaks and kind of have to figure those things out. Transient guest tax, just wanted to touch on this a little bit. We raised that rate back in '21. You can see that collection on, on slide 81 on the right-hand side. That collection is, has exceeded the drop in 2020, from 2020, and has exceeded what we were collecting prior to that. So that number is looking pretty positive for those recipients, which are the chamber TPEC and the fields improvements. Gas tax on the next one is, has some growth. It kind of has a, a trend line that it's growing. We spent about half a million dollars of that on, on really routine maintenance, like I mentioned earlier, street lights and cameras and things like that. And then the rest is spent on their capital maintenance, their, their chip ceiling and new bass and things like that out of that gas tax fund. You can see their fund balance hovers around about, about a million and a half, which, so they have some leeway in there to do some spending. Going to a whole different story now, a whole different category. We do have, I wanted to give you an update on how the star bonds were doing because we get this question a lot. Star bonds, their 2023 performance, and we're seeing this improve every year. So when we did the star bonds, we had a company come do, come in and do a revenue projection on what they anticipated these revenues would be. And so their projections for 2023 are in the green. They totaled about 4.2 million dollars, I think that's two. And so what we collected was about 4.1 million dollars, so we're just below the projection. This is probably the closest we've been, which I would anticipate that. You can see transient guest tax has, it well exceeded what they anticipated in revenue. State and local taxes are, are right at about 95% of what they were projecting. I would say, even though we say we haven't met our projections, we are purchasing, we are getting, and where did I put this? I kind of put that in order. If you skip over to page, or to slide 87, we're collecting enough today out of the star bond fund to prepay our required principal payments. So to date, we have our originally scheduled payment for our first principal payment was 2020, or 2030. We had a five and a half million dollar principal payment due. We've already paid over two and a half million dollars of that, so we've paid well over half of that through the end of 2023. So as we have funds that are in excess of what we need to hold, the trustee is prepaying principal on those bonds. So I would anticipate, we're paying about one and a half million dollars in principal a year right now. So I would anticipate that, that that would probably pay off earlier than the required scheduled time. As you recall, the subordinate bonds will be the last to be paid. So once the principal bonds are paid off, then those subordinate bonds will be paid. Also, as we pay these off early, they redo the amortization schedule, which reduces our interest on, on the whole, the life of the bonds. So it's saving us an interest as well to, to try to prepay those off.
So if I can recap that for a second. The master developers came to us with a projection of financial performance. We were required to bring in a consultant and conduct an objective assessment of financial performance. That projection was less than the master developers. We then had to go to the bond market, and the bond market and our, our financial advisors, and they were even more conservative in terms of what they thought the bond market would support. We then actually went to the bond market, and that's why we had to do primary bonds and subordinate bonds because there wasn't enough interest to do the entire bond issuance in one issuance, and Blue Beacon bought the subordinate bonds. And so, and so now, with that more conservative financial amortization, we are just about, we are exceeding, we're about hitting the projections. We were behind. The project started slow, then COVID hit, then the hotel was slow, and we're starting to hit the projections that we relied on, and then with the conservative financial amortization, we're able to put a little bit of money ahead of the payment schedule.
True. So jumping back to slide 84, I wanted to also give you an update on some of the other downtown things, the TIF district downtown. I prepared this a while ago for Mike for some other purposes. As we add transuries to these agreements, we wanted to make sure we had it covered. We also have a project in the downtown for the parking. We were trying to see if we had excess funds to use for that. To date, this, the TIF has collected about 3.2 million dollars. In our estimations, the commitments to the hotel, the apartment and the Chicago fund will all be paid off within the next two and a half years. And then that leaves us some available funds going through the end of the period for some other new business categories and things like that. And to have discussions about whether there's other funding uses, uses for that funding. Obviously, the school district and the, and the county were part of that discussion so that we may have to go to them for part of that discussion, but that TIF section is doing really well and anticipate those, really, the, the original commitments will be paid off much earlier than we anticipate.
What is the apartment TIF?
It's set aside for an economic incentive for somebody to, to do apartments downtown.
There's $920,000 set aside for, it's described as medical student, but market rate apartments within the district. And so I have a little bit to add, but Commissioner Davis, you had any questions?
I'm just forgetting, does that cap on all the current transuries we've obligated to or paid, or does it keep going to a certain calendar?
Yeah, no, that, that's the point I was going to make. So the way that, there's a TIF plan, and there are some identified projects, which are Old Chicago and the hotel. There's also the funds that were set up for particular examples. There's also the funds that were set up for particular existing and new businesses. And then there is language in, in the TIF document that says, those are examples, they're not exclusive. And so if TIF revenue exceeds projections, we can continue to collect those funds and apply them to eligible uses. And the eligible uses for TIF and CID are broader than what the initial plan might have had in it. So as our, then the other.
Restricted to that.
To that geographic area, yep. So the, another element of the master development agreement is that it's all pays you go. So as a individual transferee enters into an agreement with us, they get in line. So each year, they have an annual allotment for them, and those allotments get paid as funds are available. If they should fall short, then they just, they don't get paid, but they are kind of held in reserve. If we ever catch back up and exceed, then they can get paid back. So there's this prioritization of transferees and their payments. The project that Debbie was referring to is there's been, well, so there were also some funds left over, I would say left over. We had identified uses of reimbursing the fieldhouse project expenses, improving the First Bank parking lot across the street, we, which is the improvement that we made recently. There was, there was a provision for possibly acquiring what we refer to as the Bennett property as overflow parking for the fieldhouse. While the asking price was more than the remaining funds, we had a conversation with the master developers and they, they concurred that we shouldn't pursue that. So we have some remaining funds. We came to the city commission in a study session last fall with a couple of proposed uses, one being the parking lot at, at the Masonic Temple, the other being shade structures and the parking lot that is the City Light stage. Both, all of that exceeds the available funds. So part of the conversation that I've been having with the master developer is use the available funds, then use some of these, these other funds. And so there's two ways that we could go about it. One is we, as the city, or someone else, if someone wanted to volunteer, could fund those improvements as a transferee, get in line with the other transferees to be reimbursed over time. The other alternative, and one of the reasons Debbie and I put this spreadsheet together, is trying to confirm that we have sufficient funds to pay all the transferees that are already in place. Not proposing that we pay them out in full, but escrow those funds, then take the remaining balance, put it towards the, the stage project, and then pick back up with transferee agreements. In that scenario, the city's not fronting any funding, nor are we getting paid back over time. I don't know that there's a lot of risk of non-performance and the funds not, not being available. But that, we're kind of having a philosophical discussion between myself and the master developers' approach. And so as we bring forward the next transferee agreement, we're also going to have to bring forward the, the shade structure question. And the other thing that's kind of holding that up is we've looked at alternatives and they seem to range in price from $750,000 to 1.25 million, depending on sales and shade structures or more of a structural farmer's market type building with a solid roof. So I've been having conversations with the master developers in terms of where do you land on product and then price so we then can finish out this conversation, bring it all back to the governing body? So not looking for a decision today, but one of the procedural questions is going to be escrow, pay cash for stage structure, and then pick back up with transferee agreements or city front the remaining funds and treat ourselves as a transferee.
We couldn't use the excess TIF to pay off our streetscape.
Our streetscape? At all, if I would dive into the, the details of that financing, I don't know the answer to that. But as Debbie mentioned, the school district and the county had veto authority on the front end, or, you know, had a, if they were opposed, we couldn't go forward. And so while technically I think there's no need, they, they don't have the veto authority anymore, I feel compelled to have a conversation with them of, here's what, the original plan was, here's the provisions, it is eligible to use for other purposes. I'd rather have that conversation with them upfront than have them read about it in the paper and have to have the conversation after the fact.
So we'll jump, the C, there's some information in here about the CID too, just showing the same type of thing, how many, where we are in the CID. They've collected about $1.4 million. It's not ahead as well as the TIF is. So that, that was part of that conversation Mike and I had with, when we looked at those numbers. So let's jump over to our American Rescue Plan dollars. I'm not going to go through the rules and uses of that because the city did opt into a standard amount. You were, any municipality was allowed to accept the standard, I don't even know what they called it.
Lost revenue.
Amount. But we chose to do that as a $10 million number and as lost revenue. So we could calculate that we lost an amount. We calculated in the $7 million range, but the flat amount for them was $10 million. We wouldn't go over that. So that's what we did. We got, we, we received a little over $7 million in funding back through, in 2022. Back in 2022, we had a discussion with you all, and that shows on this table, what are we going to do with this money? And I've listed here vehicles and equipment, we have transferred that money. Parks master plan, we have transferred that money. We, at that point, we were going to direct $500,000 to the river renewal project. We have not moved forward that. The debt service reserve, we have not moved forward with that transfer. Station alerting, we had set aside $500,000. We have done that, it was a little under 500. Facility audit implementation slash childcare, we had set aside $1 million. We have dedicated $500,000 of that. I don't have it up there, but I added it to my sheet to show you, and it's not on your page. We have dedicated $500,000 of that to Schneider, per your instruction here a few months ago. Baseball Enterprises was $1.5 million, we have dedicated that. Housing infill is, the new project is $1 million, and then the housing infrastructure at $1 million. So we have a few, we have about $2 million, $2.5 million left in that pot that we can make decisions with as we move forward, whether we want to stay with that original plan or, you know, there was no commitment to that. That was just a discussion and a consensus within your, the group at the time of, of kind of where we wanted to dedicate those funds. So I just wanted to give you an update on what those numbers looked like. From here, we go into the budget process, just an overview. April, May, we'll be doing that internally. June, we'll be bringing that to you. With our reduced schedule of meetings, we anticipate that that, we're going to be condensed considerably. So what we might, what we'd like to get from you is, is to have you think about is what, what you need from us in order to make those budget, budget decisions. Kind of the list that's in here is what we've provided before. At what level, do you want at a higher level? How, how do you, and you can have those conversations with Mike and he'll, he'll kind of direct us on how to, how to move forward with that. But what do we need to get to you with our deadlines? Because as I mentioned earlier, we do have deadlines. By July 20th, we have to know whether we're going over that revenue neutral rate, which we don't know what that is until June 15th. So we only have like a meeting or two meetings to make that decision once we get that information. And then what information is helpful to you as we make these decisions for budget? And some of those questions I talked, I posed to you earlier about what we'll need to decide in strategic planning and just keep thinking about those projections and, and estimations and things like that, so.
My office nurse had a request that if those discussions are, I'd like to take some of those first and third Mondays.
Let her know.
Let her know early.
Okay.
I, I do think, you know, we've, previously, we've done it as study sessions in small bites over a long amount of time. If you're willing, I think we could do it in, in larger chunks. Doesn't necessarily have to be first and third Mondays, but I think we could prepare it and present it in a way that maybe in longer sessions, we might be able to get through it. I hate that I ended up getting pulled away and I got a press release, I'll share with you as it relates to the Cozy Inn matter. But I assume that Debbie kind of covered, and I assume it's self-evident, that our reserve balances are healthy and above target levels. And one of the things we've been talking about is that, that point of inflection, how much growth in expenditures and in, in pay rates, we're trying to accomplish and how much growth we have to see in revenue to support that. And our recent experience with sales tax in particular has been exceptional compared to years past. And so I continue to, to look at this as one-time expenditures, that we have some funding balance that we might be able to apply towards. Debt, as we look at our debt capacity, and we talked about our capital improvement plan, all the more reason to, to try to be as regimented and as inclusive as we can in our capital improvement planning so that we aren't having the highs and lows and that we have sufficiently considered what we're going to use that, that capacity for, if we're going to use debt. And then lastly, if we can get everything balanced out, then maybe we can stay on an even keel and hope that growth keeps up with our, our annual budget changes. But I do, I, I, you know, Debbie, we had some questions in there for you to think about. I do think there's an opportunity, if we're so inclined, to start trying to tackle some big ticket items that we've just never been able to tackle before. And that's very much a strategic planning prioritization conversation. And without a doubt, that also then goes into the revenue neutral and, and mill rate conversation. And I, I'm, don't want to get too far ahead of myself, but I think we've got capacity to do some, to make some substantial decisions without having to raise taxes. So what did I miss? Any questions that came out of? Okay, so two unrelated things. I'll pass around the, the press release. I've, I've been getting peppered with inquiries from different news media sources, and so we've put together a press release we're going to share with everyone. I had committed to responding to Jarrett Cooper with Sign of 311, and I had a standing appointment with, with Nate King that we do once a month today as well. So I'll be talking to them in a little bit. But trying to make the point of, we have, there's a method to our, our approach on signs as it currently stands. We're mindful of the case law. We, we're mindful of the Cozy Inn issue. We've had conversations. We committed to bringing in a consultant. That consultant conducted five meetings last week. It's not, it's a policy change conversation for the community. No acknowledgement or no admission of anything in terms of a legal issue, it's, it's a policy issue. And it's very much a national conversation about commercial signs versus public art. So I'll pass those along. And then one other thing, you may have seen me get a note slid to me earlier this morning as the meeting was going on, and want to stay ahead of that one too. City prosecutor Christina Trocheck has, has accepted a position as prosecutor in Riley County for sexual harassment cases, a topic specific. She indicated that she wasn't actively looking, but that is a calling of hers and just kind of where she's at with family circumstances and otherwise, it's something that, that made sense for her. So I've already had a conversation with Greg about kind of subsidizing that position with someone from the law firm possibly. Christina had some people already reaching, had reached out previously about opportunities in the office, so we'll work through an interim. She, her last day will be March 29th. We'll work through an interim approach and then we'll get to fill in the position long-term.
Is this PR went out yet?
No, did you find a typo or a something to change?
Well, that's what I was wondering. Do you want us to approve it or?
It's, it's literally like headed out the door as we speak.
It's out, it's out.
Is it, okay. Yeah. So, yeah, reviewed it with legal, reviewed it with Lauren, reviewed it with our sign consultant, and as I left, Holly was trying to get it distributed. So it sounds like it's out.